All right. I call to order the Gladstone City Council Regular Meeting and Work Session for February 27, 2018 at 6:31 PM. Tonight, we begin with two regular agenda items. The first is the second reading of Ordinance 1486, which is an ordinance amending the Gladstone Comprehensive Plan Changes and Acceptance of the Downtown Revitalization Plan as a Guidance Document for Downtown Development. And second is appointment to the Audit Committee. We'll then adjourn and go into a work session to discuss the business license structure, additional discussion regarding the charter amendments related to elections, handling external stimulus issues, and the use of city facilities. Haley, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Milch?
Here.
Counselor Neese?
Here.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Counselor McMahon?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stimple?
Here. And if any of you can't hear us, let us know. This is kind of a different format, and we may not be close enough to the microphones. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, everyone. I want to remind everyone that this is -- the majority of this meeting is just a work session, which is not a standard council meeting. And the intent of this meeting is for open discussion and information gathering, sharing between staff, council, and those that have been asked to participate in this session. So, in short, the format you all used to does not apply here tonight. We aren't going to have the standard Business from the Audience piece because, again, this is going to be an open dialogue directly relating to the topics on our agenda. If you have issues you would like addressed, please feel free to either submit the information in writing or plan to attend our next city council meeting, which I believe is March 13. In order to keep this meeting on track, I'd greatly appreciate keeping interruptions to minimum. And also, if people could turn their phones off so that we don't have constant interruptions, that's kind of a reminder, so that we're focused on what we're talking about instead of our phones. So, that's where we're going to start. So, David, we're going to start with the second reading of Ordinance 1483.
Second reading of Ordinance 1486.
Oh, excuse me. Is it six?
Yeah.
1486.
Oh, I'm sorry. 1486.
An ordinance amending the Gladstone Comprehensive Plan and accepting the downtown revitalization plan as a guidance document for downtown Gladstone development.
All right. Any discussion? Yes.
I do. So...
Make sure you speak into the microphone. Grab the microphone.
For sure. Can you hear me okay? So, just wanted to let everybody know that I still can't support this plan because it reduces parking in the commercial zone along Portland Avenue. This past weekend, I had the need to do business on Southeast Division near 33rd Avenue in Portland. I could not find parking on Division or a side street. Instead, I had to park in front of a residence over a block away. When I inquired in the business about the parking situation, the employee who lives in Milwaukee told me they had to park over three blocks away, also in front of a residence. I was told the apartment renters who are not only paying high rental rates but also have to pay to park in their apartment buildings anywhere from $100 to $200 a month, so they park on the street. Most of the new buildings along there have retail on the ground floor and two or three stories of apartments. I know I'm beginning to be known as a naysayer, but there are a lot of voting citizens out there who are not happy with this plan and can vote their displeasure. This may and/or fall. Part of this position is sitting -- is setting city policy, but another part is realizing what is politically doable. Hiring experts -- or, I'm sorry. Hired experts did not listen to nor hear the concerns from citizens who lived here. If we keep the three-story buildings, as have been in code for quite a while, we need to be increasing parking, not reducing.
All right. Any further discussion?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
On this Ordinance 1486, on the exhibit, I'm curious about item number 13. Am I missing that was supposed to have been struck? And maybe I'm just getting things backwards here. On the previous page, it says that this recommendation was not accepted yet. I see it's still...
So, I think...
On this -- is this the one that we're going off of?
You have a clean copy and you have a track changed copy.
The track changed copy was the changes that were recommended by the Planning Commission. So, they recommended striking number 13. Then, from what I understand, in the discussion that followed at the city council meeting, some of those changes were accepted, but 13 was not accepted. So, that was brought back in. And that was my understanding.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. As I tracked it, it just seems like it was the reverse of the other track. Like I said, I'm willing to -- maybe I'm confused on that then.
Any other discussion? Yes.
I'd just like to remind everybody that we haven't approved any parking space requirements. All we've approved is a vision to get to certain parking requirements.
Anything else? Right. Haley, could you take a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Milch?
Yes.
Counselor Neese? Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
No.
Counselor McMahon?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. Pass. Thank you. All right. The next item is appointment to the Audit Committee. It looks like we have one applicant. Is that it, unless something else has come in?
No. That is Mindy Garland's application in your packet.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mindy Garland to the Audit Committee.
Motion was made by Counselor McMahon, seconded in unison with Counselor Reisner and Counselor Mercero.
Any further discussion?
One question. I noticed that she already serves on the Parks Board and the Budget Committee. I believe we said that you could only serve on two, but we didn't count Budget Committee as one of the two. So, this would be her second, not her third, appointment to a city committee.
Correct. Thank you for making that clear. Didn't even think about that. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome, Mindy. All right. So, we're going to adjourn out of the regular agenda. Well, do I need to have a motion to adjourn out of the regular to go into the work session?
You don't need to.
No. Okay. We're going to adjourn out of the work session at 6:40 PM and enter the work session. The first item is business license discussion. Steph?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm actually excited that we have this tonight before us because I've been here for almost two years, and I also am still trying to understand exactly the changes that occurred over the last few years with the business license program. Our intent is to streamline the process and answer people's questions about what the business license application is and the services that are provided with that, but also to hear probably from a majority of the people who are here tonight. Because from what I understand, and there's people on the council that know, that the city council in 2014 increased the business license fees after many years of no increases. And those increases came after looking at whether or what other cities in Oregon City, Westland, Milwaukee, charge for their services. So, at that time, there was a lot of detailed work going into, well, what other cities charge for business licenses? And a policy decision was made to include rental properties for commercial or home-based businesses. So, in your staff packet there, you have what was before council back in 2016 when we originally were going to revisit this. Typically, we don't get feedback from the community until we send out the annual letters. And a bulk of them, I will say, is in regards to rental property or home-based occupations. And so, our job is to bring this information to you and say, let's look at this. Is it fair? Are there other ways that we can make it more simple and streamlined? And let's hear from the people on what we can do to make this better. So, I don't want this to be contentious. I'm glad that people are here, and I'm glad that we're talking about it. And also, I'm going to have Haley talk a little bit about the issues that she has seen in administration. Our city recorder's not here this evening. She's on vacation. But they're the ones that send out the applications, and they process them. I can tell you that the city has police protection, fire protection, street maintenance, we light our streets, and other municipal services. So, generally speaking, that is what we have in a business license program. So, we want to collect information about the businesses operating in the city, and then that's how the money is distributed. However, what I also want to share, and it's in your packet for a reminder, is that back in 2016, the city council, and this was December 2016, approved a resolution called the Community Promotions Business Development Line Item. So, in other words, the money that is collected from the business license program, aside from helping offset other expenses related to police and fire, the city council said we want that revenue to go into a community promotions business line item. So, in our biennial budget for this year and for next year, we have forecasted, based on the number of business applications that we send out, that we would see approximately $125,000 annually. So, when people say, well, where does the money get spent? A part of it is on those general services that we provide as a municipality. The other part has not been spent yet because we haven't collected enough for it to be spent. It's somewhat like the transient lodging tax on where we are implementing that tax. We're going to collect it for a year, and then we're going to put a committee together that's going to talk about how those funds will be spent. So, our next step would be, at the end of this fiscal year, is to put a committee together of people from the community. It'd be an ad hoc committee that the mayor would appoint to talk about how you believe we should be spending those community promotions business development funds. So, I hope that answers some of the questions. But I also know that one of the things that we would like to recommend after you talk about the rental property management is that if we decide to do away with the rental property, you probably will lose about $35,000 of your estimated revenue, which is not a negative. I just want to make sure that you have the numbers so that as we talk about how we're going to spend it, we're not going to spend monies that we're not no longer collecting. So, we would make a budget adjustment from that aspect. Haley, do you want to talk a little bit about the home occupation process?
So, the home occupations, right now, we charge for anybody doing business out of their home $50 every year when they renew their license. It's only extra work the first license that they have or that they come for. They need to -- when they bring the license in for the first time, we do send out letters to everybody who is in 150 feet of the location and make sure that there is no one against the business that they are doing in their home. But after the first time doing that, we don't do anything new with the license.
But we're still charging $50 extra each year?
Yes.
Is that on top of the $100?
That is on top of the $100, yes. And the $5 per employee.
So, one of our recommendations is that we would streamline that to where we're only charging that initial year for a new home occupation. And then, they would no longer have to do that every year, but they would just get their business license renewed like any other business. So, that is one of the recommendations that we would like to propose to you to consider. But really, we have provided you the information, what's in the city code, and now we're very much open to what the citizens have to say, and then us having a conversation on any other changes that we need to make to our business license program.
Okay. I'm sure we have discussion on that. The $5 per employee, is that just for home business?
It's for all businesses.
It's for all businesses. Okay. All right. Do we have any discussion internally? Counselor Milch?
We might be able to shorten the input from the public if we decide to go ahead and take that recommendation. I listened to the work session that was held in March of 2016, and several citizens came forward. And one in particular looked at the code the way it was written and made the observation that that $50 fee, which is referenced as a permit, in that, according to our code, and it's on paragraph five at the end of what is on our packet, page 311. "A home occupation permit shall remain valid indefinitely, subject to payment of annual business license fee, unless a substantial increase in intensity of the permitted use occurs, which shall require application for a new permit." So, I agree with your suggestion and based on Haley's input. If we only have to really process the paperwork one time, that should be a one-time permit and not charged beyond that year unless the circumstances of this apply, you know, if a substantial change in the business. So, I think we can dispense with that one and go along with the recommendation to make that policy. I don't know if we can do it tonight in a work session, but it ought to be something that we try to clarify in an ordinance or a resolution in the future.
Okay. David?
Yeah. You can certainly reach consensus or agreement about that, and then staff can bring it back for a formal adoption through probably an ordinance.
Okay.
Okay.
The second thing I wanted to address was, we had letters a couple times in the past from a family who is in sort of a unique situation. They purchased a condominium for their daughter, adult daughter, who is disabled, and we're paying the fees as though this were a business arrangement. But the way our code describes, defines business, "A business includes all professions, trades, occupations, shops, apartments, tenements, office buildings, and all and every kind of calling carried on for profit, gain, or livelihood." This clearly does not fall into that category. This was not a profit gain or a livelihood situation. But because technically, you know, they were renting the apartment to their daughter, we considered it as such. I would favor us refunding any permit fees and license fees paid to that family related to that property for what they paid for 2017 and 2018.
And we still have their information.
Yeah. The Paxtons have been very, very patient as we've gone through our administration change and our elected official change the last couple of years, and I would support that. And I think that administratively, we need to have some discretion to sometimes take these on a case-by-case basis to have that. So, if that's the pleasure of the council, we would be happy to refund them their money.
I have to agree with what you said because I did do some checking last year when we were -- when this first came up and we had discussion. And we are the only city that charges. Milwaukee does not. Oregon City doesn't. Neither does Westland.
For the rental parts?
For the rental parts. On the bigger apartments, that's different, but on the homes part, no. And there is discretionary. And I think that's...
Are you sure about Milwaukee? Because my stepmother has a rental house there, and she pays $100 a year for just one.
Unless that's something new they've done. But I did call and check.
Yeah.
And so, but they did tell me no.
Yeah. No, she pays.
Okay. So, that may have changed.
But it may be different. It may be just a business license or...
Right. But I know Westland does not.
Here?
And Oregon City because they definitely do not do that.
Okay.
Well, we were -- one of the things we did was we referenced police and fire services. And so, I'd like to know, the fire chief is here. Does it cost the city any more money to put out a fire in a building that's used as a rental versus a building that's owner-occupied?
We don't check the staffs before we put the fire out.
Okay.
Good answer.
And, second question. If you do put out a fire, let's say you respond to a 911 call in a building where a renter resides in a home that he's renting from someone else. And unfortunately, you don't get there in time, and the person has deceased. Do you have any kind of a database that tells you that that person is a renter and that the home is owned by someone else? Is there anything in our record system that helps us know that kind of information that might be helpful?
That's not information we have. It would, if anything, would come up through law enforcement process, but we don't -- it's not information that we're going to act on.
Okay. Because if, you know, one reason I could see for at least kind of getting to know which apartments are rentals and which ones are not is to have a little bit more information about the ownership status of homes. But I don't know that it would take a lot more than just, you know, maintaining a database each year and renewing a form each year to do that.
Right. And I may say something that's out of line, and I apologize, but when I look at this, having not been here when this policy decision was made, I think it was purely a revenue generator move to get more revenue to spend on what wasn't determined. My experience has been that if you're going to operate a business in the city limits, that we need to collect that information. We need to have that information. So, I think really the hard question I'm going to ask the council tonight is, would you consider amending a resolution to where we're not doing rental properties? And that's something that I would like us to discuss because that seems to be the most contentious, one not understanding when you're charging a fee where it's being spent. And so, I would like us to have that conversation.
Counselor McMahon?
So, a rental is no different than a business. I'm sorry. When you buy one house, maybe, but if you have two or three, what's the difference between three houses and a duplex, a triplex, or a River Green? So, those, whether we want to have a fee for rentals is one thing, but calling a rental not a business, I don't agree with. It is a business. Once you've had it five years, you don't get to just sell it and collect and not, or is it three years if you haven't lived there? So, it's, I think it's misleading to say they're not a business. They are a business.
Right. That wasn't the intent. That's good clarification because there are property management companies that run a business for rentals. And so, this is why we're having the conversation, is that we can make amendments and we can make changes. But I think really we need to collectively understand what the intent was to put the rental property in our code.
And I think it was that when we looked three years ago, that a lot of the cities, so we'll have to relook, but I believe at that time, most of the other cities around us were charging a $25 fee per rental unit as well, per housing unit.
And part of this discussion may be that you want us to go back and research that again. We can do that as well.
Some of the input from citizens who I think were property owners was that I think some of them mentioned that in some municipalities, you don't get charged the fee unless you operate more than, say, three or four. So, it comes into the categories that Counselor McMahon described. You know, when it begins to look like an apartment building that's just spread over several locations, then it's more in common with what an apartment complex would be or a triplex or quadplex or something rather than, you know, an individual home. So, another option might be to continue to have some, you know, to consider it, continue it a business if, or to have a license fee for the business if it's beyond a certain number of homes.
Or have a cap where if you have over five houses as rental units, you still have this fixed fee. It doesn't go up incrementally with every single one that you own.
Yes. Just per address.
Yeah. I know there's more discussion than this. Do we want to address the two issues that Counselor Milch brought up first and get some kind of a consensus on whether we want to? What was the first one?
Let's see. I think the...
Modify the home occupation.
Yeah. To not have the $50 the first year.
A one-time permit for home occupation businesses.
Right. Counselor Reisner? Yes?
Yeah.
Counselor Tracy?
I agree with that.
Okay. Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor McMahon?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
I support that.
And I think we know Counselor Milch does, and I do. So, we'll go ahead and get that language for the next meeting. And then, the second one was the Paxtons.
And I would say maybe more, instead of specifying them, maybe to allow staff to would be a better approach, to have staff look at those issues and deal with them accordingly.
On a case-by-case?
Yes. Instead of just saying Paxtons and then not get, or if we do say Paxtons, but at least be that staff then has the ability to do that for further cases.
Perfect.
I'd like to add a comment to that, but being in the landlord game, landlords like myself work for every tactic to lower costs. And whether the tenant is somebody that needs to help and/or just a kid, your kid, that needs to help because they don't have enough money, I think you've got to tweak their code or they provision whatever to help keep that from happening.
Yeah. We don't want people taking advantage of it.
It seems like in the case of Paxtons?
Paxton.
Paxton. There you had, as I understand it, a daughter who was disabled on some level, was able to live alone but not able to work or was receiving maybe social security disability. So, there might be things that you could put in, you know, to capture that a little bit more.
Yeah.
So, you would avoid, you know, somebody that's just going to make that claim without it really being something that is, like in the Paxton's case, truly a, you know, sort of medical necessity.
I know.
Not to presume, but I would say maybe one of the indicators there would be guardianship. I hate to have family members who are legal guardians of their children. Their children live outside the house independently, but yet they're still guardians. This may be one of those cases. I don't know. But I would say that could be a qualifier as well, especially if you have a single-family unit.
We've got several of those in the community.
Yeah.
And, you know, and I've met a couple of them, and it's a difficult situation. And we need to be cognizant of that.
But do we want to give the staff all of these rules that they have to follow or just give them the ability to make that determination on their own?
Let them make the determination on their own.
Yeah. I think that would be fair.
Because it's not for the whole public to know, and they can get the information, and then they can adjust or make it accordingly.
Yeah. I think we have, I know we have great staff. I think they make wise decisions.
But they would go back to us with qualifiers, correct?
Yes.
So, we would know how those discretionary decisions are made. Yeah.
Okay. So, how do you feel about that? Counselor Milch?
Good.
Counselor Mercero?
Someone's trying to make...
Counselor McMahon?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner? Mayor Stimple? Yes. So, there you go. There's your direction on that one. So, the big issue's going to be the rentals. So, we kind of stopped talking about it. So, I'm sure we have some people in the audience that would like to weigh in. I know there's Mr. Person sitting in the front row that, come on up. You can sit next to Colin. And don't be nervous. We're just all sitting around a table.
Well, the first thing that I would like to say is, I'm not sure why a rental property would pay more than a councilman that owns their house for what I consider a rental tax. If you're living in your paid-for house, paying one fee, but the rental next door who has kids, young families and stuff, having to pay more because the city of Gladstone wants to pay a business license rental fee, it doesn't make any sense to me. And it hurts my soul that you guys are picking on the poor people. In a housing crisis, you can't let them have a stable rent because I'm a landlord, I'm paying over $500 for a business license. paying over $500 for a business license. I talk to people all day long, I've never met anybody that paid a $500 business license. So until you can show me that the business license is a normal amount, no one's gonna be able, in River Greens, a duplex next to you guys, is ever gonna have stable rents, because I don't know it's not gonna go to $5,000. If you're gonna have a ridiculous amount at 500, how do I know that business license and tenures is gonna be 5,000? I have no idea.
So do the apartments pay $25 per apartment also? Yes, they do.
Per apartment.
So what my business-
Per apartment, yes.
My business, it's the barber shop, the pet grooming shop, they pay 135 each, and then I'm paying 125. One little building's getting $400 for business license. And we don't even know where that money's going.
Yeah, they're paying their business and then your business on top of that.
So I have to charge them more on top of their $135 business license because some ridiculous council, three years ago, thought it was a good idea to be like Portland. We're not Portland folks.
We didn't use Portland as a base at all, it was Clackamas County cities.
I have rentals in Milwaukee, Oregon City, Canby, Gladstone. Gladstone's charging me, I'm not getting charged anywhere else. I laugh when you guys go, "We've checked everywhere." Well, I'm the guy you should be talking to because I'm the one that's got them, and I'm not getting charged. And if I was, I'd be paying $1,000 for a business license. Ridiculous.
It was my, from what I remember, and I'll have to check, but I do believe that other municipalities were charging. And if they're not, I mean, I guess my question to that is, why did River Greens not come to us? Because, yeah, they have 300 units, so they paid $20,000.
River Greens is a stock.
Yeah, they're a company, they're a corporation.
They're a conglomerate of the United States. But you could take every city in the United States, you might get 15, New York, Portland, Seattle paying a business license on rental property. Not Gladstone, and Lebanon, and Soyouslaw. For heaven's sakes, $500 for someone trying to help the community? I just rented a duplex to a city employee's mother, and I gave her a smoking deal, because I think this thing is gone. I'm counting on this thing gone. If it's not, she's not gonna get the same smoking deal any year. It's gonna be up more because I either charge more or I sell them. It's really ridic-, I don't see how you guys can't see this as being a ridiculous fee, I really don't, it just flabbergasts me. I think I have a lot of common sense. And I just, I look at this and say, why would a property owner pay less than the renter? Can you, can anyone answer me that?
Are we at, excuse me, sorry, are we at about 125 a unit, is that what I understand, per year?
No, it's $25 per unit, there's $100-
So one single unit would be 125, correct?
Yes, two units would be 150.
Okay, so I'm doing quick calc here, you're less than 1.5% on that total for a $1,000 rent, $1,000 a month rent over the full year. If, so what I'm curious about is that you have control over your market caps, you have control over your rates, right?
I do.
I too have rents.
I do, yeah.
So my question to you is, I mean, we're talking about one, less than 1.5% over the year.
We're talking about a $500 business license.
Aggregate to you, because you're the business owner, correct?
Correct, but-
I mean, I'm just, because it's numbers.
I have a duplex right now that I'm gonna lose $10,000 on.
Over this business license?
No, that, over, because it's gonna be a bad year in that unit. But on top of that, I gotta come up with $500 for a business license fee.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not challenging you, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows what the number is, what the true number is for the business license per unit at $1,000 a month.
We're in a town where the sewer lines don't even hook up to my existing housing sewer lines. And I don't complain about, I don't go, Jim, why are my sewers plugging up when they've settled over 100 years and they won't hook up right? I'm trying to just keep them clean. And you guys want a fee that is matching the biggest city in the area? Just because you guys want more money that you don't even know where it's gonna get spent at? Do a favor to my renters and don't gouge them, is what I'm saying. I don't care if it's $1 per, $1 a month for these guys, a few bucks makes a difference.
So I understand you had an idea about a cap or something like that?
Well, yeah, if you wanna charge, I don't think it's right to charge any rentals, no matter if they have one or 100, but if you're gonna do it, it should be on a tiered thing, one to five gets charged 50, five to 15 gets charged 75, 15 to 25 gets charged 100, with a max of 125. No one should have to worry about a $5,000 business license.
Okay. I think that sounds great.
So how many rentals do you have in the city?
16.
Okay.
I rent to a lot of people's friends and family.
Oh, I'm, sure.
It kills me if I have to raise them.
So run that tier by me again, you said 1 to 5 would be 50?
5 to 12, 75.
Okay.
Just anything close to-
Would be 100.
Something fair, but you gotta have a cap on it. There's, Gladstone Toyota pays less in a business license than I do, haven't, and they have a billion dollars in sales, you know. I might make 50,000, but you want 500 as a business license?
Thanks, John. Do we have another person in the audience, wanna come up and sit at the table, please? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Nolan Kidwell. I own a mobile sharpening service called Cascadia Cutlery. I opened last year here in Gladstone. I've done all $22 in business here in Gladstone. Almost all my businesses outside of Gladstone, the restaurants here aren't real interested in sharpening, and I do a lot of my business online. That said, I agree, I felt a little nickel-and-dimed when I came around the second year to pay $50 more than a business with an inline store, because I operate out of my home, because I'm on the road most of the time, I drive to sharpen. But actually, I was most bothered by the fact that they decided to charge me an extra $5. I know, I'm supposed to just shut up and pay the $5, but $5 for an employee fee, when how do you have a business without an owner?
Oh.
So, I mean, I came frustrated about the nickel-and-diming, the $50. I said, okay, well, I'm out of a home, that's how they're charging it, but I wanna know how you have a business without an owner. It's redundant, or it should be just included in my $100, it should be $105 if that's the case.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Didn't know we did that way.
That's all I've got.
Well, thank you very much. So I know there's a lot of people out there, anybody else wanna come up and talk about it? Come on up.
Hi, Randy Roulet. I've had, I'm on the planning commission, I'm the chair, but I'm speaking as a property owner and a businessperson. And I think, I've got rental properties in Gladstone, I have for over 20 years. And, you know, honestly, I don't mind paying $25 per address, it's like a couple bucks a month. And I think it's well worth, you know, helping the city with infrastructure. So that doesn't bother me a bit. I think, you know, when you say, is it a business? If you fill out your tax return and you write off things to do with that property, things that you've done, amateurized a property and so forth, you're getting a benefit from tax. So yeah, it's a business, for sure. And I think that the business owners need to contribute a little bit more. I think another discussion that we're probably gonna have is the transient rental property, which I also have. And I have rentals in Oregon City, too. And it is different. But I think consistency is a thing that we need to get to, and be fair. And if you have one property that you're renting as a transient rental, like a room in your house, I don't think it should be treated like a dedicated property, which I have. And I'm willing to pay that 1,800 bucks tax that I think I'm gonna have to pay next year on that, because it is a business, and I do make money, more than I do month-to-month. So there's a lot of things that we need to look at. But for the guy that's renting a room out, you know, in their house, no, I don't think they should have to pay that tax. That's a whole lot different if you say apples for apples. A hotel is not a room in someone's house that they're renting to make a couple bucks to pay for groceries or something. So there's a lot of things we need to look at. Thank you.
And you know the business license fee does not go for infrastructure, it's for economic development.
Okay.
Yeah, just so you know.
Whatever it's for-
It would be nice, but we'd love to have it go for infrastructure. Jim would like to have that, but-
I think there's, does the money go in the general fund though?
No, it's a separate line item.
Okay, thanks.
Kevin Johnson. Work for a company that has a commercial building, it has five tenants. And we certainly don't mind paying an extra $25 a year, however, we would like to know where it's going. And I don't think we would be opposed to it, for it going to infrastructure. And I'm as guilty as probably a lot of people in this room, voting for the last 40 years in this town, voting for people that sit in this room that never raised any rates. At this point, we're so far behind, any of this money that's collected through this fee should be going, or at least the majority of it, should be going to infrastructure repair and maintenance.
Amen. Thank you. There's other people out there, come on up. Don't be shy.
My name is Sheldon, I'm a professional pancake flipper here in Gladstone, I have pancake catering business. But I think a few years ago, the biggest things that made me upset was the lack of communication. All of a sudden, one year, the fee was 40, $50, the next time it was like 300.
Yeah.
Whatever, so whatever you do in the future, I would encourage you to communicate before the notice comes out, so I don't have to make a visit to the emergency room for heart trouble. And the other thing is, you know, we have a, we have some money set aside, you said, for business development. We've been trying to get a business owners group going here in Gladstone for the last five or six years, and I don't know if we could get any money, you know, to help that going, it's up and down. The business owners are here, we're meeting, we're meeting the second Wednesday of this next month, so you're welcome to come to that as business owners.
Where are you meeting?
At, across from the grade school, Gladstone Community-
Oh, the community club?
No, what is it?
Community Club.
Community Club, yeah.
The second Wednesday?
Second Wednesday, we're meeting once a quarter.
Oh, once a quarter?
Yep.
Okay, community club, and what time is that?
5:30. Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Thank you. I gotta send, I haven't sent out the email yet.
Okay.
Five to seven.
Do you have the council's email addresses, because it would be nice if you-
Most of them are on there.
Okay. Okay, make sure that we all kinda know, and we can help get the word out.
Okay, thank you.
So the Chamber of Commerce was funded by cities, or is that just funded by membership? By membership, okay, so they don't get economic development funds? Okay. Anybody else?
One of the things in the downtown redevelopment plan that we just, you know, we adopted the section amending the comprehensive plan, but part of the vision there is that in the downtown Portland Avenue District, there would be a business owners association started that would do things related to that area. But other areas like McLaughlin Boulevard, all the car dealerships, they could also have a, what a business, what is it called, something BID, well, anyway, Business Improvement District, you know, and there would be ways of assisting, something like that. I grew up in San Diego, California, and south of San Diego, between San Diego and Tijuana, there's a city called National City. And years ago, the mayor down there decided that it would be a good idea to move all the auto dealerships along one street, and they marketed, called it the Mile of Cars. And if you hear a TV ad or a radio ad about selling cars, it says, "Come to the Mile of Cars in National City, that's where we're located." And that city makes about $5,000 a year per residence in sales tax revenue, with most of that coming from the Mile of Cars. In a state that has sales taxes, if you have businesses that sell $40,000 SUVs in your city, you're gonna make a lot of income as a city from the sales taxes that those businesses generate. And in Washington, that would be the case, in California, that's the case, in Oregon, that's not the case. The income we make is from these fees, and it always has bothered me that the business that sells a $40,000 SUV, and the business that sells a $400 iPad, and the business that sells a $4 Hawaiian ice snow cone, all have to pay basically the same business fee. It's not progressive in any sense, it doesn't make sense as far as, you know, what they're probably earning as a business. But we can't, well, Ontario, Oregon just became the first city in Oregon to have its own sales tax, and I'm not suggesting that we do that. But the other thing is, I think we need to keep in mind all the things that businesses in this city contribute to the city, besides just their presence. I'd like to know which businesses are hiring Gladstone residents, so that they are not commuting to Portland for work. When I go to a football game, a sporting event in the city, I open up the program and I see the names of businesses that are sponsoring the teams, and the medical care that's there on behalf of the teams and other things. And then we have our festival in, on August, and I know that there are businesses that are contributing to making that happen. I think we ought to be doing things that encouraging businesses to play a role in improving our community, not by collecting a tax from them, although, you know, there may be a need to have some administrative fee to keep track of who they are. But I wanna stay on good terms and kind of continue to promote that level of involvement in the community, and that supported the community by the commercial businesses that we have here.
Okay, that's a much bigger discussion.
Yeah.
Much bigger.
Yeah.
And as, to share with you on, with the community festival and being involved with that, trust me, we have gone out and talked to some of the dealerships along the McLaughlin, and to get them to give money is very difficult, and you have to go through a process, and we, we're going to try again this year, we went last year, so it's something we're working on, but it's gonna, it's gonna take baby steps to grow that, and to make it happen.
Well, in the meantime, we need to decide, do we want to change the business license fee setup that we have right now for the renters, the rental units? Do we wanna change the pricing in general? How do we wanna move forward with this? I would like to see, as far as the rental properties go, do what Mr. Person's had said. I really like that cap, where 1 to 50 is five units, is $50, 6 to 12 is 75, and 13-plus is 100, on top of the standard business license fee. I think that's fair.
Say that again, Kenny.
For 1 to 5 renters, rentals would be $50, 6 to 12 would be 75, and 13-plus would be 100.
So why would you charge somebody that lives in a duplex more than you would charge somebody that lives in River Greens?
A duplex would be 50, and a River Greens would be 100.
Per rental unit?
No, uh-uh, no, total.
Yeah.
So you have a cap of $100.
So the 300 residents, 300 units in River Greens-
You break it down per unit.
Which is how it's done, it's broken down per unit, so that would be my question.
Okay, well, then let's just not do it at all.
Well, I'd like to know, is this, to do another, because I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure that when we looked at this three years ago, that other cities were charging, because I know two of the counselors that were present at the time would not have gone for charging a brand-new fee that other cities were not. So I guess I would like verification one way or the other, from staff, staff to do a little bit of groundwork for us, and find out what, or either pull it up from, and I guess I'll just look back through the packets as well, it looks- I'll look through the packets because it was in there and I thought they charged.
Well, and some of them did. But I did do some research on that. And I brought that forward before because I disagreed with the other two councillors that brought that up. And I... And there are some people that, yes, they do have property here in Gladstone, but they also have other locations in other cities. And they are paying more there than we... They're paying less there than what we're paying in Gladstone. And it wasn't... Gladstone was the highest compared to the other communities. But I would like to have staff go back and we revisit this and look at it.
So I believe we're getting a consensus that the council is open to modifying the current rental property licensing process. And we can go do that research and come back to you with perhaps what the other Clackamas County cities are doing. And then we go from there. So I think it's good that you agree. I'm assuming that you'd like to revisit the rental property piece of that.
Yes.
Does that agree?
I would feel more comfortable if we did.
Okay. Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes, I think it's a good idea to look at.
Counselor Melch?
Yes.
Counselor Mursrow?
I think it's a good idea to look at, but I'm not voting as such.
Counselor McMahon?
Yes, to look at at least.
Yes, okay.
So, yes, Counselor.
The mayor, can we... So did we settle that?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm curious about... The gentleman, was it Kidwell? Nolan that came up a moment ago and talked about the $5 owners' fee. So I'm seeing two different things in this business license fee. I'm seeing the $5 is added per employee over three employees. But then I see we also have language that says $5 is added just for the owner.
Do you have clarification on that, Haley?
I can read what our business... The back of the business license says. And it says that fee for a license plus the cost for each employee for the purpose of determining the annual license fee, employees are defined of the number of people directly employed by the business, including part-time employees and the owner of the business slash rental property.
So why are we modifying three employees in the other portion of the language is my question.
I think...
Kind of 1 to 3.
I think it's an oversize.
And then it says over three. So it gives me the impression if I'm reading this, it tells me that...
Oh, so that was the old one.
That's the old one.
That was prior to 2014.
Okay, so I missed that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So do we want to change that to be over three employees? Or do we want to just not have that $5 employee fee?
$5 for the owner. I didn't...
Yeah, and sometimes a business might be owned by a husband and wife and you'd have two.
Yeah.
So the idea that just charging for, you know, have the base fee include up to three and then only go beyond that.
I think that sounds fair.
That's a structure I could live with.
So a home business and you have more than that, then that's a big issue too.
So if you're looking at page 3-1, at the bottom where it says effective January 2016, third bullet says business license fee for each FTE. That's what we're modifying, correct?
Yeah.
So you want it...
Over three.
Over three? Okay.
Does anybody disagree with that? Okay. All right.
Mathologies for tracking that.
No, no, no.
No, thank you. That answer your... Okay.
I thought the aim was to have more businesses come to your town was really kind of what I figured. So that's why I said both the $50 and the $5 seems...
Well, we're doing away with the $50 annual for a home in...
After the first one.
You have...
Right, yeah. Be like an application fee kind of thing.
No, we're saying that for owners, we're not going to charge. No, it's just for anyone over three employees.
Thank you.
So, yeah, you wouldn't have to pay it unless you have over three employees out of your house.
Or just me doing all the sharp things.
Perfect. All right.
Out in William City, it can't be in places that are in Gladstone because Gladstone restaurants aren't interested.
Well, we need more restaurants. I agree with that. Somehow, some way.
Well, okay. So a couple more things that I've always tried to be consistent with letting you know because I think the council's done an excellent job the past year and a half on improving our communications. And yes, I think we can do a better way of doing that. So any changes that we're going to make will have to be done at a council meeting by amending our ordinance. And then we will make sure that we're sending that information out so that there are no visits to the emergency room next year. None. And also, the other new policy that we've really been consistent with is telling people how we're spending our money. And so at the end of the fiscal year, when we have used funds out of the business development community promotions line item, we can do a report on that so people know how that's being spent. I do believe that this council has a true desire to improve the economic development component and that I think it's great that the downtown businesses are trying to organize because that's the kind of partnerships that we want to enhance and create here. So I feel like I have enough guidance to work with staff to bring something back for the council to look at.
Do we need to formalize some kind of an ad hoc committee moving forward to help figure out what to spend the money on? Or do we want to bring that up at another meeting, next meeting?
Yeah, I think what we need to do is if you're going to make changes, you make changes. And then we're going to have to do a revisit our budget on what that's going to do with the revenue. And then once we have that piece, then we probably should put together ad hoc committee this summer and do that. Yes.
Could we put something in the newsletter announcing that so that we could get people that are interested?
They're all here, right?
I'm sure there's more people than this that are interested.
Yeah.
But put it in maybe a couple of months so that we can get the most people possible. Yes, Counselor Reisner?
Has most of the home occupancy businesses paid their license fee for the year?
Yes, we have about 225 that have paid. And I believe Haley said there's close to 300.
That's for rental properties.
Oh, rental properties, sorry.
From what I have seen, what I... The home occupations that I know about, yes. There's still maybe 150 of them who have not renewed. But that is not just home occupations. That is businesses, that is rental properties. That's in total. But, yeah, from what I can tell.
How many home occupancy licenses do we have?
I'm not sure. I'd have to run a report on our program for that because the program puts everything together. It doesn't separate it out unless I ask it to.
Just a guesstimation, you wouldn't have?
I haven't been doing it long enough to have a guesstimation. I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's fair.
Tammy usually does.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I would guess based on numbers I've heard, rumors and such, it's over 200.
Okay, Counselor Tracy?
I don't have anything for her.
Okay, so we'll just advertise. Counselor Mursrow?
I'll just make one note. I, in addressing the question about the one we just discussed regarding the home occupation, I asked a question. Since we seem to be charging $150 versus $100, do home occupation take more time by the city staff and the police department and all the groups?
Just that first year was the 50 that takes more time.
I asked the question, okay, whether it took more. And the answer was yes. However, through streamlining, our city administrator suggested, along with their city staff, through streamlining, that she believes that the cost can come down to a fact that we only charge annually. And I... Excuse me. We don't charge annually.
Right.
We charge once.
Right.
And I would just like to thank the creativity there to help bring the cost down so it in fact can be lower than the normal businesses.
Thank you.
I think you should more be concerned as to why the fire chief doesn't check to make sure people have a rental property license before he puts a fire out.
Now, wait a minute. Can I check list out?
Now, this has all been very, very good conversation. Thank you.
Okay, and so all of those business owners that are interested in helping create the policy and where to spend the money, please let us know. You know, Brandy?
We got some people... Yeah, and please, absolutely, we want your feedback. We want your engagement on this one, yes.
One more thing. I think it's important that the data we collect by doing this license be something that is really available and accessible to the community where it's needed. We have a couple of former restaurant sites along Portland Avenue where maybe a budding restaurateur would like to buy the property or rent the property or somehow go there. And I don't know if they can just walk into the city and say, "Can you give me the owner of this now-closed restaurant so that I can open my restaurant there?" But if we're collecting data from businesses, it'd be good to have some kind of a database of that kind of information so that people who are interested in doing business here, we could streamline their path to getting started as well.
Well, hopefully, we'll have an economic development person or at least a couple hours devoted to something like this. But at this point, we don't.
Well, actually, the new Tyler technology that we transferred over to does have a business license component. And so we are building that database. And they're public documents, so we can make them readily available to show that businesses have licenses, yes.
Good.
Cool. All right, are we done with this one? Okay, the next is item number four, which is additional discussion regarding charter amendments relating to elections. And there goes the mass exodus of business owners. Oh, it's his name because he needs to sign up for the committee too.
Now's the time for them to go.
All right, so Counselor Reisner, I believe you're the one that brought this up?
I did last fall and then again a couple, I guess, yeah, a couple of months ago. And it was during discussion, suggested that we talk about it at a work session. And so here we are. So it's been suggested by several in the community that we put forth a amendment to the charter changing the method how we replace councillors midterm. And four of the... The seven of us were appointed at one time or another. And so I agree that we should be elected instead of appointed. And the city government is one of the closest governments that are responsible to the citizens in our country. And so since we're, you know, kind of, we're the... Tire meets the road. I think that the citizens should have the opportunity to elect us, even if there's an opening midterm. And as I mentioned here, there's four different regularly scheduled elections a year. And two of them, the one in May and the one in November, don't cost the city anything to participate. The other two would be charged along with whoever else was on the ballot, be it, you know, like say Westland like they were back in September or maybe some other jurisdiction in the city. Or not the city, I'm sorry, in the county. So my suggestion is that we put forth a charter amendment on the November ballot so it wouldn't cost us anything to that effect. I mean, in a nutshell.
So if we're going to fill the vacant position by election, does that term then finish the existing term? Or does the new term start from that day, four years from that election date?
No, it'd be like...
To just fulfill that term.
Fulfill, yeah, like what occurred with yours.
Okay. I think we all need to be elected, absolutely. But what I'm afraid of is where we were before when we barely had a quorum. So what do we do to ensure that that isn't going to happen again?
Well, there's no assurance that more than...
We need something.
You know, two or, I mean, it could have even been, you know, three openings on the council or even, you know, four, which happened to Clackamas Water a few years ago.
I'm sure we lost a whole bunch of people and their mayor.
Right.
And it's not pretty.
No.
And there needs to be something there to allow the council to function short of waiting months and months for an election.
Well, as you can see, there's only about three or four months between the election. March to May, May to September, and then September to November.
Well, you have filing. You have... There's a whole lot of milestones that have to be met. Counselor Tracy?
You know exactly what I'm going to say. Would this have been brought forward had the outcome of the last appointment session been different?
Yes.
It would have been.
Yeah, for, yeah, it was something...
Sincerely, you would have brought this forward had that outcome been what you would have desired or somebody else would have desired. I'm just curious about that.
Yes.
Because I think it, quite frankly, I mean, you don't... Let's not be disingenuous. If you wouldn't have brought it forward, then just say so and that's fine.
Oh, no, no, no. No, no, this is something, you know, that...
Because that outcome didn't really serve some people's purposes. So I think I need to challenge that.
No, 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 Phil. And I appreciate that you are. No, it's something that has bothered me, not only at this level, but at the state level. We have more judges in this state appointed and then run unopposed than were elected outright. And even like, so, you know, at the federal level, at least the Senate confirms those appointments. In Oregon, they don't. The governor just makes the appointment and it happens. But don't get me wrong.
Okay, but we're talking Gladstone.
No, 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 I agree with you.
I would rather...
I know.
An election as well.
Yeah, Counselor Melch?
Back in November, I could try to think of which year it was. What year did we have the charter amendment that got defeated? Where we tried to change the whole charter?
2016.
2016, okay. They included also recommendation for elections with an appointment in the interim. And I think I would be more inclined to support something along those lines. If I look at the dates of the election here, we have four people on the council right now whose terms will end at the end of this calendar year. If any one of the four of them were to get hit by a bus or resign or whatever and a vacancy occurred, right now, under the way you've written this, it would be too late to have an election to replace them in either the month of March or the month of May.
Right.
So the month that they could have an election to replace them would be the third Tuesday in September. They would not take office under this proposal until that election was certified, which would be maybe two or three weeks later. So maybe in early October, hopefully in time for the first meeting in October, they could take office. And a few weeks after that, the first Tuesday in November, they would have to run for office again if they wanted to continue beyond December of that year. The other draft of the method of filling vacancies that was developed by the Charter Revision Committee, I think I preferred that. I think they did not attempt to rush an election, which I think may not give all citizens an equal chance to be a part of it, as you say, collecting signatures or filing papers or all the rest. And I think, and I wouldn't want to have... For the council to go for a long period of time without some appointed. Now, as we've discovered, the appointment process may not be perfect. But at least it gives us a full council. And I think that's more important maybe than involving the citizens each time a vacancy occurs.
Yeah, I... Yeah, it's flawed. I'm sorry, folks, but my great idea ended up not being so great, but...
Actually, I thought your idea involved the public far more than the... Than just hearing councillors recite a name from a list of paper applications. councilors recite a name from a list of paper applications. That was a great process, and, you know, and, and the only counselor, when you were describing the process, the only counselor who said in advance, "What if I don't like the recommendation of the interview committee?", was Counsel Reisner. Everyone wanted to hedge their bets on who they would support after those interviews. So the public interviews were a great thing. The additional information gained by interview questions versus just a paper application, that was a great thing. And because there were some difference of opinion over should, who should've been appointed, that created some problems with the community.
Yeah.
But, but I still think, Mayor, that you were moving us in the right direction as far as a more open, transparent process. And I, I don't want you to, to put yourself down for that, because I think you did a good thing.
Maybe that can be refined, but I wanna make sure that we have a full council, because it's dangerous not having a full council. And the city deserves seven of us sitting up there making the decisions.
Well, I-
I mean, we do. The citi-, we deserve, the citizens deserve it.
So, but I think they also deserve to elect who's up here.
Right. Well, that's where I'm torn, because I also disagree with us appointing vacancies exclusively, because I think that's very self-serving, and I think that's dangerous, too. So where do we find that, that happy medium that makes it fair, open, inclusive, and still give us a full council? None of you are leaving, so this isn't gonna happen anytime soon, so I'm just, you better not.
Crossing street stuff in Gladstone.
I know. Well, we're bubble wrapping you. We got that in the next room.
I cross streets.
No, it's not public. Sorry. You can send us a letter. Send us an email.
No public comment.
Yeah, we're not making a final decision tonight.
Do it a similar even.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I don't disagree with Counsel Reisner about the election process. I do agree with Counsel Milch. I mean, I think that you do end up having too much of a deficit, perhaps, the way that this is structured. So maybe we should look at some other language that, that was original language, or something that was brought up in draft. I'm, I'm in favor of that, and I do agree with, I think, councilors on the council agree that they should be chosen by the citizens. The process was, was flawed.
Yeah.
But it was, it is what it is, and so moving forward, I would, I support your wanting the citizens to elect their representatives. So I wasn't pushing back on that.
No, 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 no.
No, there definitely needs to be some wiggle room.
Well, this is, my, like I say, I took what the Charter Committee had, had put forth in a couple of, you know, the, the different sections, but also thirty-three is, is what I'm suggesting. But it's a suggestion.
So could we, we have until August, is that correct, to come up with the language for a charter amendment?
For, you mean for the November?
For November. Yes.
About right.
So can we look at this for a month or so, and then come together, maybe at the May meeting, and finalize language?
And find the mayor that we looked at for almost a year.
Well, we're looking at one piece of it, not the entire, entire charter. So this may be simpler. If we come together in May and we can't decide, and we're about ready to duke it out, then we need to postpone it longer. But I think that there's some pieces of this that need to be thought out a little bit I think we all have the same vision of community engagement in elections and all of that stuff, but we just, we're gonna be a Bill Osburn and think of every single what-if scenario and make sure that we are covered. Does that sound all right for you guys? May?
Yes.
Sounds good to me. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, does that sound okay?
Is there something specifically staff supposed to be preparing for in May?
Nope, nope. We just wanna make sure it's on the agenda. All right. David, anything on that one?
No, I think it would be worthwhile going through the, sort of, alluding to what Tom said, what some of the Charter Committee, you know, did in terms of that language.
Okay.
And at least, you know, you've got some pretty decent work there, whether that becomes what the final language would be or not is, is irrelevant, but I think it's a good place to start.
Okay, and we are just looking at this one small piece? We're not tackling the entire-
Right, just the vacancies.
Okay, that's it. All right. Anything else on that one? We're all good?
Yeah.
Okay, so the next is handling external stimulus issues. And this is David.
Well-
Or, and Jackie, whoever wants to talk on this one.
So, when, we had our, our department head retreat, City Council Retreat, in this room back in January. It was a great day. We did our strategic planning, and we kind of digressed at the end of the day, and the City Council, who, who I have to say, I'm very impressed with how you are really supporting staff's recommendation and helping us get some projects done and move Gladstone in a, in a positive way. But I think we all agree, too, that there are external things happening either in the community, or maybe we don't all agree to disagree and move on, that we said at the end of that retreat, why don't we have a work session on how, how do we deal with these external issues that are happening so that we can stay unified as a body and, and keep moving forward? And so we scheduled this. David doesn't normally attend work sessions, but he's here. What I put in your packet, I mean, we're not the only city in the, in the state that has issues, if the League of Oregon Cities is actually putting out publications on how to deal with disgruntled citizens, or how to run conductive meetings. So you have that information in your packet, but, but really, I just, I wanted to have a conversation, because we are doing so well as an organization and as an elected body. How do we wanna deal with complaints that, that come in? And, and David and I say, "Okay, City Council, here's your council rules and guidelines. If you want to address any of these complaints or concerns." We got one today regarding park regulations. A majority of you need to give us guidance on whether or not you want staff to look into these issues. If I don't hear from you, we don't do anything. If four or more of you say, "Yes, we want to take care of this," then that's David in ours queue. Our city attorney is paid on an hourly basis, and just because somebody sends him an email doesn't mean that he is going to spend city funds to look at that. That has to be guided by me, or it has to be guided by a majority of the council. So I wanted us to have a conversation on, on how we can, can deal with these concerns that we have. We have public comment periods on our, on our council agendas, and we allow everybody to come and speak on three minutes. We don't censor people from the public. They can come every meeting and talk about the same thing every time, but it could be a negative distraction. And so David and I just kind of want to say, what can we do to help you stay focused and unified so that we can continue going forward? I try very effortlessly to provide all of you the same information, and I think as we get into the next agenda item, talking about the use of city facilities, you'll find that maybe there are members of the council that don't want me to share all that information with the council, and I'm okay if you guys say, "No, we don't care what each of you are doing individually." But, but my job as city administrator is to make sure you have all the information that you need to make good policy decisions. And, and so that's kind of how I wanted to lead off this conversation, and I'm hoping that, that the rest of you will, you know, David is here, I am here. What can we do to better support that? I mean, do you feel like you're getting good information? Are you having issues that you would like us to, to talk about collectively?
Well, my big issue is that we have not a bunch of people, but we have a handful of people that are bombarding us with issues constantly. And every single one takes our time to read the documents, research them if we feel it's necessary, on top of staff. It's usually the same things over and over again, and they come to City Council, and they do their, give their three-minute speech, and it's the same thing every month. Can we put something in place that gets them the answers that they need so that we don't keep getting bombarded with the same stuff over and over again? What can we do to get, I'm not gonna say to stop it, but to get them what they need?
So, I think, I think one thing, getting, get back to, to what Jackie said, is, is, I think, trying to close a loop on those issues. And, and that's really gonna come from the seven of you, most often. I mean, there may be things that are brought up that are wholly administrative, that are pretty obvious, and everybody kind of acknowledges, "All right, yeah, that's something that the city recorder can go and look at," or whomever. But on some of those bigger policy issues that, you know, you may get brought up from time to time, or more often than time to time.
Yeah, monthly.
Yeah, I think you, I think there, you know, it probably behooves the council, you got a lot on your agenda, you wanna move through it, you're, you're very effective in terms of keeping the moving, the meeting going, but maybe taking a moment or two, having a discussion amongst yourselves that, kind of along what, you know, Counsel Tracy did not too many minutes ago with, with Counsel Reisner, you know, and, and had that sort of just, dare say, direct in a way that makes it sound like he was challenging him, but it was, and it was just-
I'll clarify my challenge.
You know, you, you did it in, in, I think, a very, you know, diplomatic, polite way, but it was a, it, it put that issue sort of to rest, that maybe otherwise was, you know, on that particular issue, something that might've lingered. I think there could be some of that-
In the meeting itself.
Drawn from, you know, maybe just a frank discussion amongst the seven of you.
During the meeting? At the end of the meeting, or after business from the audience, or does it need to be a separate?
I think that's really up to, to you. I, I would tend to suggest that you do it maybe towards the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Just because of the, the way that things work and, and the rhythms of meetings, but there's nothing that says you couldn't do it right after, if it's a business from the audience issue, and that issue has come up more than once, and it doesn't seem to be being resolved or answered, do it then.
I think we need to do something, because people are feeling that it's not being heard, that their complaints are not being addressed, and I think it's great to do it during the meeting.
So can we be a little bit more specific? I mean, because I know there's times when people come up, and blatantly, you can just tell they're making a statement, and you say, "Thank you very much," and we move on. But I, I try to provide people answers. I've done that with you and Mr. Poole, wanted information on the Oberson property.
Right.
And we do that. So if people aren't feeling like they're being heard, I don't know if all of you are hearing that, or if that's just coming from the mayor.
Well, no, I'm just, as an example, Mr. Osburn comes to the meetings every month, and he usually brings up the same issue over and over again. And if we could, as a council, in, during an open meeting, say, "Okay, well, you know, his concerns are warranted. Staff, this is what you want, this is what we want you to do."
But have they not answered his question periodically? And given him, and give, and, but it seems like it's never enough.
Well, that's, that could be true, too.
But I think that's-
But if we can address it right then, in the meeting, maybe at the end, and give staff direction then, it wouldn't go on and on and on.
I think there can be, you know, and I'm not at all singling out Mr. Osburn or anybody else.
Sorry, Bill.
But, you know, when it comes to things that may be more sensitive, or more, you know, have a sharper policy edge, that can be one of those times where it's sort of difficult, and there may be lines that are, naturally, just amongst, you know, people that are elected officials. Not everybody's gonna agree on everything all the time.
Of course not.
And so the harder that discussion, or at least the, maybe the edgier the issue, the harder that discussion can be. So I think, I think maybe with respect to those, for us to know, Jackie to know, that for her, for me, to spend time looking at that issue, responding to it, that that's a priority for a majority of you.
Okay.
May be sort of difficult to, to talk about in the moment, but makes it ultimately a lot easier in the end, because we're not thinking, "Are we wasting our time?"
Right.
Number one. And number two, frankly, that I think there's a perception amongst staff, amongst those that serve elected officials, that, you know, if they do that on their own, and it's something that might involve a split amongst elected officials, do suddenly do they look like they're playing favorites?
Mm-hmm.
They're sensitive to that issue as well. So the more that discussion can happen, and there can be that direction given, I think the better off everybody is.
Yeah. I didn't mean to imply that you guys are not responding. You guys are doing a phenomenal job, but there just seems to be a couple issues that just keep going on and on.
Well, it, I think if there's anybody who's not responding, it's generally been the council, and part of that is because the, the rules the council adopted four or five years ago, which we revised and re-adopted recently, said, and I think we kept it basically the same, that it's really not the job of the council, the responsibility of the council, to respond directly to the, the general business from the audience, except to ask clarifying questions. And we've had citizens say, you know, complain, that they go away feeling that they've either been ignored-
Right.
-or not listened to. And I think, I'm impressed by the fact that you have chosen to, that staff has chosen to respond to them directly when the council hasn't. And there have been times when I, as a counselor, felt that answering a question or responding in some way would help, I hoped, help keep them from coming back another time-
Right.
-with the same issue.
Right.
But, you know, I can't speak for the counselor as an individual, I mean, for the council as an individual counselor, but, you know, and I don't wanna take council time to decide what is our position as a council on this issue, to respond to one particular complaint or something that comes up in a meeting, but-
Would you be open to allowing for a period of time, maybe at the end of the meeting, not business carried forward, but business from the council, or something where we could address issues that we felt staff needed direction on?
Yeah, I think any of us could say, "You know, Mr. Osburn brought up some, some, something earlier in the meeting, and I think this is something we might wanna think about and, and find a way to respond to."
Okay.
I can see that happening. And, and some of these citizens who have concerns have approached me directly, and I've tried to listen and be responsive, and sometimes then I, I find that, that kind of bites me in the butt when that happens, because then I, I hear secondhand people saying, "Well, Counsel Milch said this, Counsel Milch said that,"
Yeah.
-as though in my attempt to, you know, to be a sounding board to someone, I was siding with them, or openly opposing them, or anything else. I try to listen, and I, you know, and, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm too open to them. Maybe other counselors are saying, "I don't wanna return your phone call. I don't wanna sit down and have a meeting with you." And maybe, maybe I'm new enough on here that I don't know what the style should be, but...
Yeah. Counsel Tracy?
Well, I, so we're in a, we're in a very difficult position, Counsel Milch, and I think, I think you should be able to speak to the folks that you represent. I mean, I think that's our job.
Yeah.
I think when we're sitting up on the dais, I think when we have this particular rule, says council members will not respond to comments made during the business from the audience agenda time, except to ask those clarifying questions, we really are the sounding board there. And I think what I've experienced with this is that that will generate my thought to, maybe along with you as well, approach staff to, to look into the issues that are being brought before us and, and business from the audience. But I, but we're being very cautious now, and I, I understand that.
Yeah.
And by the way, talk to me after the meeting, 'cause I, I have another third-hand-
About me, great, yeah, that's perfect.
But I, I feel like that's what we should be doing. And quite frankly, we should be able to discuss it amongst each other, too, in settings where we are not forming a quorum. That's politics. That's lobbying. That's the thing that you do as a representative of the people that work, so you get more information from your colleagues, and you go back, and you can address those issues with your neighbor, or whomever has come to you and, and discussed the issue with you. Is it not? I mean, I, I've-
Yeah, yeah.
I've got a degree in political science, and I remember that's how you worked as a representative, anyway, throughout my schooling, and so that's how I would like to conduct business. But I also thought that part of what we were doing up there was to allow us to be the sounding board. Staff takes- sounding board, staff takes notes, we take notes, we can come back to staff with clarifying questions, or as in the case with Mr. Osborne, I think it was the last council meeting, I got, I was asking clarifying questions. I think that's how it's supposed to work. I think we're a little bit shy right now because of the political culture of this particular city, and I would love us to get back to actually representing the people and not, not walking on the other side of the street when you see somebody approaching you going, "Councilor Mills, Councilor Mills."
Or shopping in Oregon City, 'cause you don't wanna shop and go outside anywhere.
But you're gonna be approached, I mean, that's part of the job.
But I would like a, a more direct channel for us to direct staff, direct staff, on what steps, what next steps would be for people's concerns when they come to us during business from the, from the audience.
Madam Mayor, I think that's a great idea, but I also keyed in on something Council Mills said, it's that when we are discussing something with our, with our citizens, we are not representing the council. That is, that, too, is part of the council rules. We're not speaking for the council, we're not speaking for the city at large, we're discussing that issue, and we're, as their representative, carrying it back to the governing body. Am I correct? Do you agree with that?
Yes, yes, definitely.
So, so I would like to emphasize that we're all very careful about that as well out in the community.
Right, but when we're sitting up there and somebody comes to us with business from the audience, if we could, at some point during that meeting, if we felt that it rose to a level that needed staff attention, that as a body, we could direct them, yes, could you please look into that?
And I think we've done that, have we not?
Yeah, I think so, too.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that's, 'cause normally, we haven't responded to business from the audience, that's just kind of-
I think we've, actually, I think we, we, we have, we, we discussed the Oberson issue, the Oberson property issue, I know that, uh, Citizen Poole came to us, and sat in front of us, discussed his issue with that, and I believe you responded to him shortly thereafter, Jackie, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'm not, I'm not, again, not pushing back on you, Madam Mayor-
It hasn't been the standard, but I think we need to do that.
Want it to be a standard.
Yes.
I agree, I agree with that.
Yep.
So, so that's, that's good feedback, and, you know, the other part of our retreat that we had is, we all agree that, that we are gonna work together as an organization on our projects that we're going through, and part of that, when we talked about, we have the, the police and the fire levy that are coming up for renewal, and we have full support from this city council, but when I start hearing externally that, that there might be some opposition to police and fire levies that are coming up for renewal, I want all of you guys to have that information, and I want us to openly talk about that, because if there is opposition here, we as staff need to prepare for that, because our budget is reliant upon the passages of those levies. And so, trying to talk through that information together so that we're not getting bogged down in, in negativity, I think it's, it's reassurance here collectively that, do we all agree that, that we support the police and the fire levies going forward?
Yeah.
Is there a question that we don't?
I think I'm starting to hear some of that externally, and I wanna make sure you're aware of that, and I guess it's just nice to have the, the confirmation in talking about this, that, that we are going in the right direction, and that there isn't any opposition.
Any of the councilors in opposition to the levies?
No, and to be foolish, because why would we spend ten million, twelve point seven million dollars now for a new city hall for myself and, uh, city staff and police station, and then not fill it?
Yeah.
Or only have it-
Councilor Mercer?
For half of it.
Uh-oh.
I do not believe that those that were addressed and answered at the retreat were all in favor of, of the lefty-going-away plan, but I'm not certain everybody spoke the way they felt.
Hmm. Councilor Neese?
I still am, have some reservations on some things, so I just need to work through it more.
Are you reaching out to staff to get your questions answered?
I will.
Okay.
I have not, but I will.
Councilor Tracy?
Police department and fire departments are very important pieces of a full-service city, not the most important, I'm gonna be behind both, and absolutely behind them.
Reisner?
I'm on the fence.
Okay. Then are you reaching out to get your questions answered?
I've talked with our city administrator, and we'll continue.
Okay.
So, I mean, this is good, this is, I appreciate your honesty, but we're planning on coming to you in March to do a presentation on the renewal of police and fire, and we would like to get your comfort where it needs to be to be in support, because if, if we have a divisive council on, on those two ballot measures, that could be detrimental to the services that we provide in the community. So, I would hope that, that both of you would reach out, we have two chiefs here tonight as well, that, that with me, would provide you the information that you need if, if you're having those issues.
And I'm in support 150%, and I'll be on the pack if I need to be making that public, I'll be on the pack.
I know we do have both chiefs here, both fire and police, and where I speak for you, Tom, I think we're both willing and able to hear any concerns, this is the first I've heard of it, that there's any concerns or issues from the council, 'cause that's the council which are, the message I received was that we're all for it, we're supportive, we're team, and so as a police chief, we say, "Okay, we trust you, and your word is what you said, and so let's go forward." But now if there is some hesitancy, then we're here.
Yeah. Both of you, please make a point of engaging the chiefs.
My people, I think, you know, it's at least a minimum of a hundred thousand bucks to replace a training police officer. Last thing I wanna do is have any of our people question the commitment of our city leaders and start looking for jobs, and start creating an issue out of fear of lack of representation. So, we're more willing to talk or answer any questions.
Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, not for me, I, that's, this is, you know-
And I do wanna say, Jackie, I appreciate you, and thank you for keeping us informed and sending out information to us so we know what's what, because I feel that's really important, that it's not our job to micromanage you, because you are the city administrator, but it, but we need to take the direction, you know, from you and what you share with us.
Anything else in this section that you wanna cover, David? 'Cause there's a lot of external stimulus in this little city.
Yeah.
A lot.
I think, it's probably, you know, something that would be, I think there's some really good stuff in here. I think one thing that I always, you know, say, this is certainly not an issue that's unique to Gladstone, you know, is, I think people have asked in the past, not necessarily here, but in other cities, and maybe, maybe here as well, you know, what, what affirmative steps with respect to certain types of testimony, if the, you know, goes on, or is repetitive, or certainly gets, you know, more aggressive. And the thing I would say there is, you know, you always gotta be balancing, let me back up. One issue is with respect to the Oregon's Public Meetings Law, is that it's a, it is a, the right of the public to observe the proceedings. There is no absolute right to speak, except for certain, in certain specific instances. So, virtually every city I know, every county I know allows for public comment, that's just good government, but that's not necessarily a legal right. So, you can always think about, you know, are we gonna have public comment all the time, or do we wanna, you know, maybe approach that differently? But, but opening it up for public comment, you do need to be careful that you're, you're not, and I don't think it's ever happened here, but pushing back on something that just because you don't like, you know, the, the message, there is a fine, sometimes a fine line that, that elected officials see between someone that's being, you know, vehement, and then stepping over a line, and, and, and crossing that line. And frankly, it, it takes a great deal before you can really say you're out of the meeting, you're, you're being disruptive. Of course, if that happens, then there are actions you can take. So, that's, that's the only thing, and I, I didn't, I just throw that out there because sometimes people ask, you know, can't we have, people, people muzzle, or, you know, have them, you know, stop asking the same question, or, you know, and, and really, no, I mean, if you open that forum up, that's, that's sort of, I think, part of the deal. And so, the, the, the critical thing, I think, is, is having, as we're talking about tonight, a way to maybe, if you're finding that there is a certain amount of repetitiveness, or there is a frustration amongst people that they're not getting answers to their questions, coming up with a way to make sure that we're, we're handling that and, and getting it down through staff.
Yeah. Well, a great example of that is Patrick Mathis, who has come over and over and over again with the same complaint every time, and we just wanna make sure that he's getting answered.
Yeah, and, you know, part of his, if I recall correctly, had to do with the appointment process.
Yes.
And allegations about potential Meetings Law violations.
Yeah.
And, and there are gonna be times, and I think we did this with Mr. Mathis's complaint, I know we did, you know, there, there may be a legal issue there that we wanna talk about in executive session-
Right.
And seek some direction from the council, if any. And so, there may be times where you say, "You know what, unbalanced, we're, we're not gonna do anything."
Right, and that's, we need that clear, we need staff, this is what you are to do, and here's the answer, we're done, we don't need to discuss it every single month.
Sure. Yeah, I think then being, maybe it's having some time at the end of the meeting, coming up with a way to fit that in-
Right.
Where it's something that we dedicate, hopefully not an inordinate amount of time to, but some time to, to make sure that those loops are being closed.
Yeah, I think we need to close those loops. This was great, by the way, thank you, this was a lot of really good information.
That's for Tracy.
I think maybe one comment is that-
Is this a race? Here, we need to do like they do it all, my beans, this is what you do.
Yeah, I do that all the time with table tennis, I don't know why I didn't do it.
But these don't stand up very well, we need new ones.
Man, actually, speak, Councilor.
Man.
So, just a, a comment, so that just for the public to realize, is that after the third time I hear about drunk worms at the, at any place, I tune out.
Yeah.
So, that the, the third time that I hear that, I do not listen, because I've already heard it three times, and I'm not gonna waste my time listening to that. So, just for the public to know that when I hear something over and over again, and they're not getting the reply they want, I apologize they're not, but I am not listening after the third time.
Yeah.
So.
Absolutely. Councilor Tracy?
I'm, I'm gonna circle back, I am pretty overwhelmed by the fact that anybody on the council wouldn't be supporting these two levies. I, I wanted to say that the police and fire levy, it's one thing to be on the fence on those levies, I think as sitting body, a member of the sitting body, governing body of this town, it's absolutely another thing to initiate any kind of campaigns, or be involved in a campaign that comes out against those levies, I, I just feel that's unconscionable. So, I'm gonna just leave it at that, I'm, I'm surprised, but I, I just think there's a big difference between not supporting it and then actively campaigning against it.
Thank you.
And I never stated that I was campaigning against it.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not accusing anybody of stating it or otherwise, I'm just saying that that's how I feel about it, is that there's a big difference between not supporting it, but actively campaigning against it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nope, you gotta do this.
Table tennis.
Councilor Mills?
Um, I just, it, it occurs to me that, as we knew from a vote, where we had to, several, three people had to recuse themselves from a vote on the budget last year, that there are three people on the council who are related to fire department employees, and, uh, one of them is related to captain, and two of them are related to people who are not captains, I believe, for what I know. I hope that, I hope that the information people may or may not be getting from family members is not influencing how, how people feel about these levies.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right, so do we have any more discussion on this issue? And for all of those in the audience, there is a red button underneath that desk right there, so when you guys get unruly, I can hit that button, and there'll be a lot of action, really quick, hopefully. All right. Are we good on that one, Jackie?
Yes.
Okay, so the last item is use of city facilities, and I'm sure you guys have seen some emails flying around, so let's get on to the next one.
If you look at item number six in the, with the pink sheet, we kind of drafted some questions to consider for discussion on citywide facilities. I think one of the, the most obvious questions is, is do we want to allow political activity in city facilities? And all the research that I've done that predates me is, is that we haven't allowed PACs or any political activities to use City Hall, the senior center, which is consistent with what the school does, and I think really, at this point, it's up to the, the city council to give me direction. As we know, there is a library PAC that's interested in using the senior center, and so we might as well just set that policy this evening on whether or not you want to allow that.
Jackie, I have a couple questions. Uh, well, one of the things is, High Rocks, I met with the owner today, and he's very much open to allow meetings to go on there.
Yep, we're actually gonna use them, for one.
And he was very excited that we would be interested in using his facilities. Secondly, I, on this two million dollars, and I have a question, and it pertains to the nature park. The city owns the nature park, correct? So, we are liable for that. So, when you have groups up there using it, do they have to carry an insurance policy? I mean, we have children up there, where they're doing events, you know, or helping with cleanup. If someone was to get hurt, would that fall back on the city? I mean, what, what's protection there?
And that's actually the second question. The first question, I'm sorry, is that we should, I'd like to take these in sequence order first.
I apologize.
But that's okay, it's a good question, is, what do you feel like on the first, do you want to allow political activity in city buildings?
No, I think it's easier just to, to not.
Now, and for clarification, it was not for us to have a rally, it was simply a question and answer, a fact, factual question and answer, where we would host it, and we would love the county or the city to give facts, which my understanding is that is completely allowable. We need to get the facts out there.
Well, and, and I have a question on that, then. If we use that facility, how does it get unlocked, and how does it get locked up again afterwards? Do we give keys out, or is there only-
No, there's staff.
You pay for a monitor when you use the senior center?
Yeah.
Part of the rental fee covers a monitor-
Yep.
That unlocks and locks.
Okay.
Yep.
And is there the whole time.
So, just some background that may inform your discussion of it. So, legally speaking, you may open up the senior center, another office, city-owned property, for that type of political discussion. You can have a, a policy that says, you know, "We're gonna allow for meetings of groups to come and talk about, you know, issues of the day, campaigns that may be going on, but we are not gonna allow people to have, as you say, rallies-
A rally.
Or, you know, something that is more disruptive in the senior center, or the library, or wherever the facility might be. That's fine. Uh, the, the key thing there, if you choose to do that, is, is really two things. One, that you put it down in a, in a written policy, okay? There's too many instances of, of it being a sort of informal thing, and inevitably, somebody from, you know, Campaign X, who doesn't like what Campaign Y is doing, lodges a complaint, it turns into a lawsuit, it gets silly very quickly, and also often expensive very quickly. So, getting it down in writing, talking about what the contours of that policy are, I think is, is really important, if it's not already done. And then the second thing, and this is, this is something that everybody has to keep in mind, is that you, it's viewpoint, content neutral. You have the, the PAC for the library, and I'm just gonna- You have the PAC for the library, and I'm just going to throw at something that's really stomach churning here. You know, that means that, you know, the Satanists or the, you know, the, you know, the KKK can come and do the exact same thing. You can't make a distinction amongst, you know, we like that group, but we don't like this group. As long as the group wants to do basically the same thing, come and talk about politics and policy, and, you know, is going to respect the otherwise sort of neutral rules of that facility, cities, municipalities across the country can't say, they're good, no good. So you have to realize that's part of the bargain, and I just want to be sure that that part is understood as well.
Well, the city, are we going to do a Q and A thing at all?
So, what your request came in, the email, was that there is a Library United PAC that-
Library Foundation and Gladstone United to host a Q and A.
To use the senior center.
Yeah, to rent it.
Correct.
Yes.
That is different than the city doing a town hall fact-based presentation.
Okay.
So that's why we said timeout, we need to get some clarity here. Are we going to allow political activity in city facilities?
Yes.
But we have. Two years ago, we had Mark Meek use the senior center as a candidate, for a candidate's form.
Yeah, and that's the, and that's-
Yeah, it's completely your discretion, and we are okay. We just need a decision made before we go down this path of whether or not we're going to allow political activity.
If I can be allowed, just real quick, I want to make it absolutely clear that it always has been my direction to run these things by the city administrator. So this is not due to any specific person, or administrator, or politician. This has all been dealt with, even when Mr. Swanson was here, I always ran these by him, and he gave the approval, Mark Meek in that case, or disapproval. So this has always been, but the standing policy from that and from my predecessor was, no political activity at the senior center. Unwritten policy.
Counselor Mercier.
Mrs., Ms. City Administrator, you've helped in a couple jurisdictions. What is your recommendation, based on your city's experience in the past?
I always, we always erred on the side of caution, and we just kept politics, political activity out of civic buildings. I mean, we can get creative here, there's restaurants and there's other venues, but that's always been my practice, is that we don't use the facilities. But I know this, this is Gladstone, and so that's why I think we need to have the conversation, because I don't think there's a right or wrong. I think there's, okay, we made this decision, this is what we're going to do, and move forward.
Based on that comment, we've already talked tonight about wanting to support businesses, and that seems like an appropriate way to do that, is give people like High Rocks.
It's not big enough for the amount of people that they were expecting.
Yeah, because 50 people is what they can hold.
Yeah, so that's why it's only been used for one event, not for the big Q and A.
There are businesses in Gladstone, and they can be used or can support those activities. And High Rocks, for example, has been used several times for campaigns.
Yes, we're going to use them, but the big Q and A, there would not be enough room.
Okay, and I'll put it this way. I recommend that we stay out of the city buildings to run PACs.
Okay, Counselor Milch.
Yeah, I agree with Counselor McMahon and Counselor Mercier. I think I would prefer that we continue a policy of not having political action committees use city property. Despite their intent to do a neutral question and answer thing, they're not the appropriate one to do it. We wouldn't want the Steve Johnson for Mayor campaign to host a candidate debate in the, you know, the senior center. You know, it invariably will be unequal, and it needs to be impartial. That's city staff and county staff. In this particular election, the library election, it's the job of city and county staff to do the messaging, and I trust them to be able to do it in a neutral way that would say, a yes vote would mean this, and a no vote would mean that. And PAC members can come and participate as audience members and hear the information, but it would not be appropriate for them to do any advocacy in that setting. And I hope that policy continues. And I'm a part of the PAC.
Yeah, so if we can find another large venue in Gladstone that's easy to get to, please let us know.
I said the Union Hall on First Avenue hosts the Democratic Committee of, or Clackamas County Democrats once a month, and it probably holds 150 or 200 people.
Perfect, that's where we're going. All right, so how does everybody feel about that? No political stuff? I think we need to define a little bit more. Other uses that we should not be allowing in city buildings, besides just PACs. I think there's some other uses that we may want to consider excluding as well.
And I think that's part of our questions tonight, as we get into other entities that aren't city-related that want to use City Hall. Should we be allowing them? We're looking for guidance on the use of city facilities altogether. So the first question was, do you want to allow political activity in city facilities? And I'm not sure if you got through everybody yet.
Right. Counselor Reisner?
Well, we've done it in the past, but it-
Makes things simple moving forward.
Doesn't make, what's that?
I said it makes it simple moving forward that we're-
Not doing it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't really make a difference to me.
Counselor Tracy.
I would agree with Counselor Milch. I would say that it's too gray an area. I'd rather it be really clear.
Okay, Counselor Neese?
Same thing.
Yeah, McMahon?
Yep.
Mercier, yes? Counselor Milch, yes? Okay, so yeah, no political activities in the city buildings.
Okay, and then we can jump to number three, but number two covers everything as far as insurance goes. We are going to cover that tonight. Do we allow outside entities to use City Hall? The senior center already has a policy in place, so entities that come to call in, correct?
Correct.
And can you talk a little bit about?
Yeah, so the $2 million policy was created by the council, I think five, six years ago, I believe it was, because it was found that we weren't meeting our obligations. There was that risk. So that was started. Now, it did end up causing business loss to the senior center for facility rentals, but I think that the risk that we had before then was greater, and then now with this requirement, it is less. I think it's good to have this $2 million policy, and I think it's, I think a lot of people get that sticker shock when they see that number, but when they actually go and find out that a rider on your business insurance or your homeowner's insurance can range anywhere from $75 to, at the most I've ever heard, is $175.
For what insurance?
Homeowners or business, either rider. Yeah, for the one-time event.
Okay, I kind of disagree with that. I've made some calls, and-
Well, that's what has been my experience with the clients that I've worked with.
Here's copies of those facilities' actual contracts.
So we're going to talk insurance now, then?
I'm just clearing out so everybody's, I did make a ton of copies of this.
Is this all, these are all, this is all one packet?
Yeah, these are just, this is the actual rental agreement with the centers that I had listed here, their information. And I didn't have time to make a ton of copies, so. But the bulk of what's in those packets is in here. All right. Just want to make sure everybody had the information while we went into the discussions. I got two more of these, if people want to-
Well, I can tell you right now, it's not on here, but Canby Adult Center. Yeah, I can tell you right now, they are in litigation. They had a $2 million policy. They had a gentleman who was at a rent, at an event. They had the policy rider, as required. Gentleman slipped or tripped on a curb or something in the parking lot, and this was a member who, you know, had been there many, many years, was very familiar with it, and now they are party to a huge lawsuit. And I, I mean, they're like shaking in their boots, huge lawsuit. I don't know where it stands right now, I couldn't tell you, but I do know that even with that, it's still a risk.
Well, we have, anybody that walks in any of our city buildings, there's a risk that they're going to trip and fall and get hurt, and we're going to be in a lawsuit.
But my point as a staff member is to reduce risk as much as I can.
Well, there's also, the twist is also that it's the, the fact that when you charge for the facility, that creates a different relationship than it would be just, you know, walking into a building, you know, under normal circumstances.
Okay.
That, that's where some of the legal kind of tripwires can come up. We got some information from your insurance agent, as well as we've put together some talking points as well in terms of, what's the logic? I think it may be helpful initially, if you don't mind, if I answer-
Yes, go ahead.
Counselor Neese's question, because that can help set the stage. So Counselor Neese asked, if someone goes up to the Obersen property, I believe was your example, the nature park, right? And is recreating, going up there, and happens to slip and fall and hurt themselves, would the city be potentially liable for that? So anybody can sue anybody, right? We know that much. But the reality is, when it comes to that type of injury, if we're not charging somebody to go and use the nature park, and I'm not saying, I don't know that we do, I don't think we do.
Nope.
Then Oregon law has a nice, very, very broad, what's called recreational immunity. And that applies actually to both governments and private property owners. There was some, for a time being, not too long ago, a big hole in that law as a result of a court case. That's been addressed legislatively.
Did it, did it get finalized?
Yeah.
It was, okay.
Yeah, that was in the last legislative session. It's not as, it's not as great as it was, but it's, 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 it still largely protects cities and counties from local governments, from recreational immunity claims. But that is subject to some exceptions, one of which is if you're charging for use of the facility. And depending on what kind of facility it is and what you're charging for can eliminate your recreational immunity. So to your question, if you have somebody that's walking the nature trail in the nature park, and we're not charging them anything for it, ideally, we have some signage that we'd be putting up that would say about, hey, you're, you know, basically walking at your own risk. That generally, you're going to be covered under recreational immunity, using the outdoors, if you're not opening it to the public and not necessarily charging a fee. But when it comes to facilities, again, when there's that quid pro quo of you can use it, but you're paying for it, then you, you know, get into, you know, potential liability that wouldn't otherwise exist if someone were just, you know, walking into City Hall to do business. Could, but wouldn't be as, you know, it'd have to be, wow, you had like kind of the classic thing you see in stores where there's a big sign that says wet, you know, wet spot, or people have to take reasonable steps to, you know, let people know that there may be a danger, but if someone just falls and happens to fall, usually there's not liability. When you pay somebody to use their space, then things kind of change a bit. And that's where the $2 million figure comes as much from trying to capture what your aggregate tort claim limits are. So it used to be that state law said local governments had a tort claim limit of like $750,000, and that never changed. I think it was even a little lower at one point, or rarely changed. And then a case about 10 years ago involving OHSU blew that up, and so now what happens is the state court administrator, every fiscal year, has a formula that they use to determine what that tort claim limit, how much it's going to rise. So for local governments now, if you have death or bodily injury, multiple claimants, I think the tort claim limit is around $1.5 million, maybe a little bit less than that, 1.4 something. That's for bodily injury and death, and then you also have a separate category of property damage. And that's around, I think, $400 and some thousand for this fiscal year. So putting those together kind of gets you to your $2 million. That's where that figure often comes from. As Colin said, that's, that is not necessarily, you know, fully protective, but it's a very conservative approach and one that I think cities struggle with, because they want to encourage use of these facilities, but people do have that sort of sticker shock, that is true. So one of the things that Alicia talked about is, and this is something you can consider, it's a risk management issue, you know, looking at the nature of what is happening and determining whether a $2 million policy is appropriate, would a $1 million policy be okay? That's a, that's a choice you can make. And, and so some of that has to do with, if you, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at her email, but it's the second page, it's the first page after Jackie's memo. And, you know, she talks about where there's activities that they're, the pickleball, tennis, where there's clubs that are coming in, there's money being exchanged, they're going and playing a sport, you know, all it takes is a couple of face plants and, you know, knocked out teeth or a broken leg. And it's the, the problem is the city, like any big organization, big, is just, is a relatively deep pocket, and there's not much you can do about that. You're a little bit of a sitting duck. So when you have these things happen, and someone is using a city facility and breaks their leg, and goes and maybe ends up at an attorney's office for personal injury, it's almost a given, you know, you can debate about whether this is a really cynical thing or not, but it's almost a given that the city would get named in something like that. And so that's really what I think the $2 million is trying to deal with, especially when it comes to activities where there's going to be that payment, you're going to be doing something that involves like a skate park use, something that could lead a reasonable chance of injury. Or the other alternative is they, as Alicia talks about in her memo, is where you've got a lot of people, there may be some drink involved, and just by the nature of humanity, you know, things tend to happen more where there's, you know, a great deal of people congregating and there's perhaps alcohol involved. So, but again, that's something that, obviously, other cities have done that. They've looked at that and said, well, we're more comfortable with less risk.
Yep.
Or more risk, rather. That's, that's something that you could do. Our advice has always been, just because of the bad examples, and I'm not familiar with the Canby one, but there are certainly others out there that if the ultimate cost is fairly reasonable for the group or the person that's renting space, that, you know, the more insurance you have, the better.
Well, it comes back to bubble wrapping the city. Who owns these buildings? It's the citizens of Gladstone. We all are here to serve the citizens of Gladstone. So if we start bubble wrapping all of our facilities where no one can use them because of the risk, well, then how are we serving the citizens of Gladstone?
You're also protecting them from potential, you know-
We are, but when we can, when we start telling them, sorry, but you can't walk in that front door because if you trip-
You're right. There's a, there's a balance there.
And I'm okay with an insurance policy. I think it's fine. I don't want to be that person that gets that phone call from a crying citizen because they want to have a celebration of life because their sister just died, and now they're told you can't do it unless you go by a policy last minute. It was a horrible phone call that I had to take. And you know me, I cry over everything. I was bawling on that one. That was, that was not right. If we have a policy, increase the cost of the per hour rate so that we can have a policy in place already that's seamless, so somebody doesn't have to go out and- so somebody doesn't have to go out and search for a policy. And I shopped around, the cheapest one I could find was $179, and that was minimal coverage, and it was a jinky company. The, the average was more like $600 to $800 for a two-hour meeting at the senior center.
But were you looking on behalf of a PAC that wanted to do it?
No, this was a citizen.
For a citizen, okay.
Yeah.
So this, so the quotes you're giving me would, would have been like, like Colin said, for a rider on an existing homeowner's insurance.
No, they were not, I was not asking for a homeowner's policy. I didn't even think about attaching it to my homeowner's policy. I was asking for just a policy. Insurance, yes, we need it, I understand it. But let's make it seamless so that the people of our community don't have to go search for a policy at the last minute to hold a gathering at one of our facilities.
May I ask another question?
Mm-hmm.
At the February meeting, the Parks and Recreation Board was brainstorming ways of, you know, making sure that they have sustainable levels of funding to support our parks system. And one of the things was that we're aware that a lot of the people who use our parks, particularly Meldrum Bell, Meldrum Bar Park, are people who don't live in Gladstone, who come in to do their boating there, fishing, and sports teams who come and use it. And the thought of having user fees for those parks was one of the ideas that had the strongest support among the board. But it's making, your comments are making me think now-
Yeah.
-we oughta look at that in the context of some of what you've shared tonight.
We should, we should definitely, before you do it, let's talk about the specifics, because the way the statute is set up is that there are essentially maximum amounts you can charge and still preserve your immunity. And so if you go over that amount, your immunity is gone. So we just wanna make sure that, at the very least, that we're communicating to you, that's what the reality is, now you get to make the choice about whether that's something-
Right. Thank you. It's good to, you know, that that, it's nice that a discussion here informs a discussion that took place somewhere else, too, and we, and we make sure that we-
And that would be a city fee, right?
Yeah, I think that was the idea. Yeah, a parks, a parks fee, that, that, I don't know if it was intended to be per league that comes and plays soccer or baseball here, or, or, you know, they didn't get too much specifics. But the concept of user fees in sports facilities was, was one of the things that was discussed.
Yeah, I can just briefly take a look at the, I just don't remember what the new limits are. But there are, they are there, and so you can basically still have the immunity as long as you're not charging more than X for Y activity.
Oh, I'm sorry. I hear I made the roll and I'm not, I'm not watching it. Counselor McMahon.
Colin, how much money does the senior center make in a year on rentals approximately? A rough number?
Maybe 1,500 to 2 grand.
Okay, thank you. So we're spinning our wheels for $1,500. And so say, say we dropped the insurance regulation, we double, so we're at $3,000.
In the best case scenario, yes.
So we're still, not to demean this, I think we are spending a lot of time on something that's very minor, especially monetarily.
Counselor Neese?
When you were talking about the person that was looking for space, and one of the things I think sometimes we've overlooked is the little community center right across the street-
They charge.
And, and they do charge.
Yes.
But they can set up 100 people in there. And, but he is negotiable on that rate, just so you'll know.
Okay, well-
And just so, it's been a past practice of myself as manager and even as interim, I've negotiated the price. I've never waived the insurance requirement, however. And I have worked with families to do that, even with payment plans, and they have always come through. And when they say the insurance is, is an issue, I give them referrals to other places, 'cause I understand that.
Other places to go hold their-
Yes. Not that I want them to go there, I'd rather them come here, but I do give them options.
All right.
And yes, last minute, I mean, technically speaking, we're supposed, even by the policy, we're supposed to have it, I think, 10 days before. And I let them email it to me the hour before the party starts. As long as I have that insurance certificate on hand, it's all good. So-
All right. So, and, and this is just a process check, because this is an example of you have one elected official that wants us to administratively change things. I have to bring it to all of your attention, and if the majority of you want that change, we make it happen. If not, we don't. And so that's what all of this discussion is about in regards to the political activity, use of city facilities. This is an administrative study? I didn't know you were doing that on the senior center, but-
I mentioned it at the last city council meeting that I was gonna bring the information.
So we've spent a lot of staff time, Jim's trying to get a pickleball agreement in place, the insurance is the piece. It's here, we've heard from our attorney, our risk manager, it's to protect the city. But if you want us to look into reducing the liability, then that's what you need to tell us, and we'll look at those options and do that.
Well, the other facilities that I visited and talked to, $500,000 was the highest limit that they had. None of them were at 2 million. And $500,000 for quite a few of them, well, not quite, there's five of them, didn't even have insurance requirement at all. They had hold harmless agreements or indemnification agreements, and they only brought in the liability insurance when there was alcohol served, which is not an option, obviously, here in Gladstone, so, anyway.
And we are a senior center, not a community center, I remind people. We'd like to explore that option of going to that, but I think a lot of these comparisons include community center functions as well.
Adult, community center adult, yeah. Wanting to poll senior.
But if a family wanted to hold a wedding reception or anything, we wouldn't restrict it to only people over age 60 who could attend.
No, never, never.
That's correct.
I've had all events, wakes, you know, not bachelor parties, but, you know-
Jim, did you wanna talk about pickleball, too, while we're on insurance?
It's, it's really the same discussion. This is an agreement, you guys are pretty much familiar with the pickleball, but with the city's policy and our, the advice from CIS and insurance, or the attorney's offices, we ask for a $2 million insurance policy. Talking with the pickleball league, no other city charges on that except for the federal government down on the beach or something was an example that was used. They couldn't get out of that one. So we're coming to you in a couple of weeks to counsel to get this agreement approved. And this is gonna be one of the issues that we need to decide. Do we hold strong $2 million, do a million dollars, or do waive it completely? It's an agreement, so it's kind of, you know, it's different. So they're, it's gonna, the use of that facility for that amount of time is gonna be outside of the city's control in a sense. So that's where we get into that. This is a risk that the council has to make a decision on.
What-
What level of risk the council wants to take. Our current policy is, we require $2 million, so we need some policy direction on whether we do that or not.
What are they asking for? What limit are they asking for?
The pickleball association? And Bill's here tonight, I asked him to come in case there was any questions, but they, they would like it to be zero, just like the other cities. So-
So you meet in Lake Oswego, right? Is it Lake Oswego, one of the cities you go to?
No, they're all over, there's two, there's like three in Westland, there's two Lake Oswego, and one in Oregon City. The gentleman who runs it, he's put in dozens throughout Oregon, the climate's all altered, and nobody charges, nobody charges him in the chair.
Or requires the insurance, right.
Counselor Tracy?
I'm just curious about what the cost would be for that particular event? Do we, I mean-
For the insurance?
How long is the event, is what I'm asking, I guess?
Well, it's not an event, it's a, maybe you can help me with this, Bill?
What it is, it's a pickleball club, and all we're asking is, part of it is where people want to help the city do the services. What we're asking for is just to be able to store our equipment there and use the facility. That's it. We're not going to, we're not charging this. Kind of agree with the reason to use the facility and store it. The problem is with the nets, you can't move them up.
Frivolous.
They're taken down, put them up every time, so you have to have a little locker that you can have. And what happens is we have a, a group that pays a fee to buy these nets, and that's what the fee's for, buy the nets, the balls, and they give a key to those people that they can bring that. Now, it doesn't mean that if somebody owns their nets, that they can't come down there and play anytime they want.
Okay.
It doesn't lock anybody out, it only secures the nets for the people that want to play.
There's like a block of time that is reserved for this group and-
There's only one side of the court, there'll always be a tennis court open, and that is first come, first served, like always. So we're just asking for a certain amount of time during the day in the morning, and we get one court, the other court is open to tennis, that, that's it. And that's all we're asking from the city, the rest is all done by the club.
But if we waive insurance, we expose ourselves if somebody gets hurt playing pickleball, right?
My question there is-
Yeah, the risk is higher.
Can we have them sign a waiver? I mean, a friend of mine was at the lumberyard riding the bike and smashed his body up on a, on a bike in, in the lumberyard on 82nd. And he can't sue them. I mean, he can, I'm sure, David, you're the attorney, but is that a possibility?
It is a possibility. The, the issue is, it's sort of the downstream problem, where you would have, you know, the individual that, that Jim's working with probably agree, yes, you know, we'll do that. But then every time someone wants to come and play under the banner of the, the pickleball club, we, you know, who's gonna, you go on good faith, I'm not, there's no reason to assume that that wouldn't happen, but it, oftentimes, it doesn't. Human beings being that they are, that just gets lost in the shuffle, those, those agreements don't get signed. There is public policy issues with respect to some of that, and whether you can completely, you know, waive, if there's a real material problem in the tennis court, you know, can someone just completely, you know, waive their right to, to come after the city for that? But by and large, yes, you can, you can enter into releases and waivers, and, and they're, they're generally effective. I think it gets problematic when you've got people that'll be coming and going.
Relating through.
Yeah, and, and it has to be specific to the individual. The other option, which I'm assuming Ashley in our office has been working on the agreement, but probably has an indemnification provision, and that's good, you know, most agreements should. And what that means basically is that the, the pickleball club would be essentially, if the city were sued and there was negligence on the part of the pickleball club, they would be picking up a tab for that negligence.
I see.
But you gotta remember, what the insurance piece does is make sure that there's actually, you know, you have blood behind the stone, so to speak.
Counselor McMahon?
So, but if the, the person next to him coming playing tennis, it's implied already that they cannot sue the city because they're just coming to play tennis on the tennis courts, is that correct, then? Is that-
They're recreating, it's recreational.
Why is that different than this other group? Because I don't, Bill, you guys charge per-
No, it's a yearly fee just for, you join our club and that's for the equipment. When they come and play, they don't charge, you don't charge them, like-
So how could that-
So, but there's gonna be, is there gonna be work that's, what's the consideration for the agreement? There's work that you guys are gonna do on the tennis court?
Uh, it's, that is with the city. But the consideration, you just store equipment there and some dedicated playing time, that's it.
So that would have to be looked at a little bit more, whether that constitutes the fee that would otherwise eliminate the, there's a quid pro quo somehow, I'm not sure.
Okay, and then would that, if we eliminate the fee for him, then do we have to do it for the city buildings, or are those two separate issues?
If you eliminate the fee for the pickle club?
Yes, the insurance for him, do we have to do it for the city, uh, city buildings as well?
No, you can, you can make that policy call on a case-by-case basis, I would say.
Okay.
Counselor Milch?
Does anybody from staff know that, for example, my grandchildren were, played soccer in Gladstone Youth Soccer Organization that uses a lot of the soccer courts up in Meldrum Bar Park on a regular basis? Do we know if they have paid the city for, for the use of that or have an insurance requirement for that league or other sports leagues that are using other parks? It doesn't seem too different from that, except it's mostly an adult group rather, and, and maybe a little riskier because of the age of the participants, but I just, I, I don't know if, if we have a consistent-
Aching backs.
Are, are, do we have a consistent policy on, does anybody know what?
What I know, what I think I know about the reserving of the baseball fields, the soccer fields and stuff, I think there is maybe, Haley might be able to help me out with this. I think there's a fee to reserve, if I'm not mistaken. But I don't know that that's really reserved, for reserving the field. I don't know the exact answer, but-
Okay.
I don't think there's a fee for the field, I think it's for reserving it or something, for the administrative scheduling and stuff like that.
So it's implied again, then, that they are just recreating on their own?
Recreating on their, yeah.
Okay. And I would almost say that's probably the same issue there, but I guess a little bit of legal guidance.
Yeah, we can, well, certainly before you bring in-
Well, that's where we're at.
Yeah, exactly.
Ashley said it's a policy decision. If you don't want to require them, then the council can waive that. And so we vetted this and said, tonight's a good night, since we're talking about insurance, to bring the pickleball into it, because it's coming to you on March 13th, and we'd like to do it on consent agenda, because it's just the insurance requirement.
That seems to be the hangup is the insurance, yeah.
Well, I think we should just not charge them.
What's staff's opinion?
It's, it, it comes down to risk. This is a great opportunity for a good partnership with them. But it, it really is a policy decision on it.
Is there any, wait, I don't want to take any staff time, but I know Jim, you, you contacted like Oregon City and some of others. Is there any way I can give a whole, give you some information about what they feel about it and how they're dealing with it? 'Cause I know, like you said earlier, nobody else charges, all this particular fee.
Yeah.
How they're, how they're getting, buying, you know, that.
Well, it's not really, oh, I'm sounding a little bit close. It's not really charging a fee, it's just requiring the insurance. And so they've taken the stance, they made a policy decision evidently to not require that.
Yeah.
So that's where we're at. We need to do the same thing.
Yeah.
Well, and I wanna say something because I feel kinda guilty here, because Tammy and I, and Bill came to one of our city, coffee with the counselor, and we were excited at the fact that he wanted to, to do the pickleball and start something here in Gladstone. And he was telling us about some of the other cities, and so we both encouraged it.
Oh, no, everything's going great with pickleball. It's a great partnership. It's not, it's not at risk and not happening, it's just the insurance.
We take, this is, this is the current policy.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have three choices.
You policymakers, you say, you follow the policy, or here's your new policy.
We have three choices, either to not require the insurance for this, for pickleball, reduce the $2 million, or accept the $2 million. So those are the three choices that we have, or the one choice, the three options. Counselor Reisner, which direction are you leaning towards?
Well, I would say-
Get rid of it?
Yeah, not worry about the-
Counselor Tracy?
I don't like the risk. I, I would, if not $2 million, a million dollars until we are in more familiar territory.
Counselor Neese?
And I, I have to agree with Matt, with Counselor Tracy, because I was, I did not realize on that part with the risk, but I don't wanna do anything that's going to not be able to, for pickleball, to be able to continue on here, so I would-
So you think reduce it?
Yeah.
Counselor McMahon?
Uh, I'm to the point of maybe not having it. I think it's, it's implied if they're on the same court as the tennis players that, that they are taking the risk.
Okay, Counselor Merstrow?
I would have a minimum certificate of liability of a million dollars. He swayed pretty easy at $2 million.
Counselor Milch?
I like what Mr. Whynot said about having a fee associated with reserving courts, but that people should assume the risk, playing, the same risk as you would playing tennis on a public tennis court if you play pickleball on it. So in that sense, rely on the recreational immunity.
Okay, and I agree with Counselor Milch, Counselor McMahon, and Counselor Reisner. So you don't have a full consensus, but there's four of us.
Okay, so as far as the March 13th meeting, we've got a majority of you that are comfortable with us not requiring the insurance in that agreement, and that's, that's what we will work with and finalize that.
If there's a statement, something we should give to groups that outlines what, you know, what the risk is or what they are assuming, we, we figure we are probably not going to be liable for it.
And I would-
Like an indemnity agreement?
If we could come up with something like that-
Something like this?
I would go along with that.
Yep, and we could put a sign on the pickleball court?
The more info that way, the better.
That, and that would be expensive.
Play your own risk.
Yes. Pickleball, specified pickleball and-
That would be okay, that would be good.
Or any, any sport that you're playing in this court.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
All right, so that's, that's very helpful. What about in general, then, for the use of the senior center? What about in general then for the use of the senior center?
So we have a couple of options there too. Some similar facilities just have an indemnity agreement or hold harmless agreement and not have insurance, and the others, the most that they have is $500,000 in liability. Or we stick with the $2 million?
I liked, uh, the, I'm a numbers guy and I like the numbers set forth by our insurance advisors that said, you know, that your, your real risk is up to about 1.91 and round it up to $2 million, that makes sense to me.
Okay, Counselor Mersrow?
I go for the $2 million.
Counselor McMahon?
Same thing, because we're only gonna make an extra $1,500 a year.
Well, hopefully more people will use the senior center.
There's not that much time in the day to, to really get that much more monetarily out of that building.
Counselor Neese?
Hopefully when we get the city hall and everything, it'll change. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go along with that with the $2 million.
Counselor Tracy?
I'm agreeing with the other councils.
Okay, Counselor Reisner?
He's our naysayer. Come on, come on.
Well, I think it, it's just like the, you know, writing the, uh, fire apparatuses at the festival.
Bubble wrap.
That was, you know, I think it's overkill, but I'm in the minorities, so.
Yeah, I'm saying it's way overkill and I'd rather go in line with what the other cities are doing, but I'm, it's not gonna win. But could we make it easier? I don't know how to make it easier for people to find insurance or something.
We do, we actually provide a link-
To insurance policies?
On the policy, it's on the last page, it says, you know, we don't get a, it isn't, it alludes to that, we don't get a kickback, we're not associated as a city with this, but it's a link and they can click on that and it's Event Insurance Link. It's like a clearinghouse and you can go search it there. But we always encourage everybody, like if anybody in the party has a home, you know, check with their homeowner's insurance, if anybody owns a business, check with your business owners. So we're, we're telling people that when we talk to them.
All right.
So we're always encouraging that.
Um, is it an option, I'm just thinking about, is it an option to have an option, a plan B? So first is you have, you require the $2 million. Option B is you charge more and you, the city pays for it, but it's paid for out of this fee.
Yeah.
Is that a-
To make it simple.
So at least there's a- So at least there's a pay- But it's built into the fee.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
I mean, that, if we could do something like that, yes, that would be, I would feel comfortable.
Able to do something.
Yeah, so that it's simple, so they don't have to go and search.
Right, and then, then again, all, the additional step would just be maybe an indemnifying clause that they sign at that point.
Yes, that's all I want.
I mean, that would work for me.
Yes.
I mean, it would cause our rates to go up, obviously, in our minimums.
But they could provide their own insurance and do it the other way.
So we'll, we'll amend the master fee schedule when we get to that number, but, um, yes, we'll follow up with Alicia on that.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you, Jim, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I did this.
Just to make it easier.
Throw it at me next time, throw it.
It didn't work, Bill.
All right, that was simple.
Do you want to do a process check? I know we're not done, but, um-
It's 9:05, which is usually way late for our meetings, but the last, use of facilities, I guess the last question was whether the Historical Society, Library Foundation, those kinda groups can use facilities for their meetings. And I know with the historical, hysterical society, the Historical Society, I've told them is that one of us or a staff would be here to let them in if that was what everybody agreed to. Or if you guys don't wanna allow groups to use the facility, would creating ad hoc committees for the Historical Society make a difference? It's an important group that I see a bright future for and would hate to not allow them to use our facility for meetings. Yes.
We have, the Historical Society has a link on the city's webpage. I see it sort of recognized as a, you know, an identified, approved group.
Mm-hmm.
I wouldn't want them to do anything political, which, and I don't think that's their intent. We'd have to advise the Library Foundation that with a library ballot measure coming up, a meeting on city facilities could not be used for advocacy of the library ballot measure. But I'd like to think that communities that are, that exist to, you know, for the betterment of this city, could have access to, to facilities for small group meetings that don't use a lot of our resources. My only concern that I raised one time was, you know, when I, about the time I was appointed to the council, we had to rekey the building and get new keys and access and if we leave, you know, all the exterior doors open for access to one conference room, anybody off the street could walk in and get to other parts of the building. So if there is a way that they could be limited to using only the door that is at the ramp entrance on the Dartmouth Avenue side that goes directly into the conference room, then you would be less likely to have someone enter and wander in another part of the building.
And one of us or a staff, I mean, we would never have a meeting here that wasn't hosted by one of us or a staff person.
But I've been to meetings in that conference room, like the Celebrate Gladstone Committee, and, and I came in through the, the door and went right in, but someone else could walk through that door and go upstairs if-
Oh, there's usually the gate blocked, yeah.
I guess there's a gate or something, yeah, I forgot about that, but, yeah.
Well, and I think we all are very excited about having community use of our new city hall and having a citywide policy, so that's separate. We're trying to figure out what to do in the interim period if, if you guys are okay with, with, you know, the mayor saying, I'll lock up and use the conference room, I'll take that responsibility. Are we gonna, are we going to just limit it to those two organizations or if, what if somebody else wants to use it? How do we staff it? How do we deal with garbage? I mean, it's, it's your guys' call, we don't have a budget for it, so we'd have to find money where we could take it from to do that. We just wanna try to get some consistency for the next year and a half on how we're using these facilities.
Well, if one of us is there, it wouldn't be staff.
Right, and that's what I'm saying is, so you've named two, Historical Society and Library Foundation. Are you gonna staff both of those then?
Or we can rotate, we'll just make sure that somebody's there.
But when does the Historical Society meet?
When?
Second Thursday of every Monday.
Yeah, second Thursday of every Monday, six thirty.
Six thirty?
When Herb was leading that group, where did they meet? Does anybody remember?
I think they met here.
Is outside place.
No, they were, they were here.
Was it here?
Yeah.
And speaking of summer scent that I just heard, they do have space up there at the assisted living side for free that, that-
Not free and it's not, yeah.
Very nice space, I've used it.
Yeah, we're here tomorrow.
So it's another, it's another option to, for people to use.
Yeah, the parking is bad and it just, it's easier access and people know where this is.
Well, and the other, the other thing too is, those are the only two organizations that are like beating down our door 'cause our facilities are so awesome that wanna meet here.
I'm just sitting here thinking of all the other places I'd love to have a meeting.
I know.
They can't use the bathrooms.
So I guess-
Much nicer.
So, you know, and, and I know Bill's been patient, we want to advertise the meetings and take care of all that and I've copied you guys on it, but I wanted, you know, we're just trying to get some consistency in, in how, how we're doing things here, so if that's fine with you, the mayor will attend Historical Society and Library Foundation and lock up afterwards.
Or one of you guys can help do that.
And maybe to keep-
We will make a commitment that somebody will be there.
To make sure that we don't have to have, you know, invite the Satanists in too, we could have a group of recognized organizations that, that have, you know, create some sort of classification of affiliation with the city. The Library Foundation is certainly affiliated with our own library, the Historical Society is affiliated with the, the structure of the city itself, you know, limit it to some identified groups and then it's not just that we're trying to, you know, running a business of, of hosting various meetings.
Well, that's- Those are the only two that I am aware of that have.
They celebrate Gladstone, but I'm willing, we haven't had any meetings 'cause there hasn't been anything to celebrate, I guess, I don't know, we just haven't had any meetings, been too busy.
Okay, all right, so we're good with that then?
Okay. So are we done with use of facilities?
Yeah, and then just real quickly, the last item is in your packet here in regards to a permanent installation of an electrical outlet.
Oh, did I get that one? It was never my intention to take it to this point, I didn't ask staff to look at that. I was going to find the money and I was going to find somebody to do it for free or whatever it took, but we haven't gotten to that point yet, so.
How are we at this point then?
I don't know.
Well-
Yes, between $4,000 and $5,000.
Right.
Yeah, no, I didn't ask for that.
I recall that you did.
I specifically said, how much is it going to cost? Please get me a quote.
That's what this is.
I've been clear saying that we were gonna try and get somebody to do it or find the money.
Yeah, I remember asking, get a quote, so that's what we did, we talked to our electrician and as you see here, there's the two, two different options with that, so that's what we got.
So if you wanna, if you wanna take this quote to get it done free, that's great, but-
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sue, I have a question.
Raise money.
Madam Mayor, I, my confusion here was in this email trail, I made a comment, it wasn't shared, I asked that it could be shared or gave the okay to be shared, it didn't matter either way. But I, I think in one of these emails, your direct email to staff was signed as the mayor and that was, I, I wasn't exactly sure when you came back and said that you weren't making the request as the mayor.
For the rental of the space, just finding out if it was available?
Yep, I'm just, I'm just asking because, I mean, I don't have my signature line at the bottom of my counselor emails, I either sign it as counselor or I sign it as myself. So I, I just, in process here, that to me seems like, it was, it was not a direction, but it was a request.
No, it was asking a question.
It was a request. But your question was, how did we not understand that you were asking as an individual and the answer is because you signed it as the mayor?
All right.
Was it an oversight? I'm asking.
I was using my city email, I was asking, I don't have Colin's email address on my regular email, I didn't think it was a problem, asking if the facility was available to reserve by the Library Foundation and Gladstone United. It is, I'm supporting a political action committee and I can completely do that.
I understand that, but we also need to be in on the conversations too. I do believe that is true.
Asking-
It, it's, it's still business that pertains to the city's business and I do wanna be notified because, and here's the reason why, and I'm not, I'm not talking necessarily in this particular case, but there are things that are going on in this community that some of us are blindsided by as city councilors and it's not very pleasant to any of us to have somebody come to us and say, do you understand that this is, that this business is being conducted by the city, by a counselor or representative of the city without our knowledge? It's not acceptable, it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't work within the guidelines of our council rules. So I ask that yes, when the city administrator sends us the emails clarifying the conversations that have taken place, I do want to know, because I don't wanna be blindsided by somebody in the community who's saying, this is going on, did you not know this? We're all supposed to be aware of that. It's part of conducting the business of the city, is it not? I mean, do you disagree with me?
Well, I absolutely agree, but I did not feel that this came up to that level, I was asking a simple question for the Library Foundation and Gladstone United, I was not asking to rent it myself.
Understand.
I was just simply asking if it was available so I could relay, relay that information at my next meeting.
Understand that.
That was it. If it was business related and it was a topic that everybody needed to be in the middle of, I absolutely would've told everybody.
Well, it was a controversial topic to begin with because we're, we're concerned about the use of the facility for political action. Were we not?
The first email, okay, anyway, you're right.
Well, we were, yeah.
Correct, okay. Counselor Reisner?
So, clarification question if I may, so as to how detailed of information do you want? For example, last night, the traffic safety has asked me to ask, to pass on to staff, i.e. Ms. Betts, that they would like to see no parking sign on south side of Caldwell, maybe a large speed sign painted on a, a street in the city to get their attention. So I'm gonna be emailing that information to our city administrator, so is that something that you're wanting her then to pass out to, to everybody that this request was made by the traffic safety through me as the liaison to, to her?
She's the city administrator, her job is the chief executive officer of the city. If she deems that important enough for the governing body to be informed about, then that's really up to her.
Okay.
We do have confidence, huh?
Right, uh, yeah, I was just-
Okay, Counselor McMahon?
So, at, just take this for what it is.
Mm-hmm.
I, I read these as well and when you say, please let me know as soon as possible, so that's ASAP, and then it says the mayor, no, and I, I get it, you were not doing it as the mayor, but that is the impression I get. And then when your comment back is in caps, not as the mayor, that just reinforces to me, at least on these little things here, that's, so take it with a grain of salt, that's how I read those.
Okay, that's fine. If I have questions in the future, I will use my personal email, which I have no problem with doing that.
So lately you've seen me forwarding you a lot of communications from the mayor, her style is to not copy you, so.
I didn't think I could.
You can.
Well, no, I, no, to the mayor's defense, we talked about this as part of the transparency conversation that we had and we were talking about the fact that you don't wanna hit reply all and that's why these-
These are informational emails that you get.
Yeah.
Nobody's replying to them.
I don't agree with the mayor, we can't be, I don't think we should be doing it and the reply alls were something that we all talked about. I, I made that mistake and somebody came to me and said, that's not a good idea, we were talking about policy, but it was outside of a policy discussion, so to the mayor, I, I agree with mayor, it should be directly to you, so you're the conduit, chief, you know, administrator.
Sorry.
No, whereas an issue, there is an apparent issue because she doesn't want me to be providing all of you this information.
No, that's fine, no, you can, I don't care.
And so that's why we need to have this conversation.
We're okay unless it's explicitly-
I, yeah.
-in the email.
I did not think that that was a council thing, I know better now, so absolutely that's fine. I don't-
And I think that's a good example of where Jackie's gonna always err on the side of, or whomever's in this decision.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, and I-
Something that seems like the council should know about, I don't serve one, I serve seven, you know, that's, and that, that gets back to some of that, being frank about it, I think can, can ward off some of that.
And I've been expecting that and that's why when Counselor Reisner was, was asking his question, I think it's, it's your discretion, you decide, Jackie, whether or not it's, it's business that involves all of us or it is just simply a clarifying question from one of the councilmen.
Yeah, but if one of the elected officials is asking something of staff, the full council needs to know about that.
I agree with that.
And, and if Neil asks for something in the past, I've always copied the full council and providing that information. Now you may wonder, do you really have to do that? But that's my job, is to make sure that all of you are getting the same information and, and so that's my style and it, and it will continue to be.
Well, my emails thanking Bob Stewart and the council, I CC'd you in, I wanted to send it to everybody here, but I didn't because I felt I shouldn't do that.[1735.61] I wanted to send it to everybody here, but I didn't because I felt I shouldn't do that. So I was going to bring it up tonight and tell everybody.
There's gray area there, this is the problem. And so, you know, well, because...
Otherwise you would have got it from me direct, but I didn't think I could do that.
In something like that where it's rather anodyne, you're thanking a community member, you're not really talking about development of city policy, you're not really getting, you know, more likely than not, you could even have replies to that email and you're not talking about a public meeting. But that's the problem is it's, you guys don't want to be deciding where to draw those lines. I'm not even sure where some of those lines can be drawn.
And we've heard from citizens very clearly that they want this type of transparency and they want us to all know what's going on.
Absolutely. So I just meant more from your desire. You'd like to do that, I think that's admirable. I do agree that I think it makes more sense even when the issue just seems so sort of, you know, non-policy based about thanking a community member for their service, that it goes generally through Jackie. I think it's a safer way to avoid that sort of serial meeting.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Thank you.
So that's the only reason you did not get it from me directly? I was going to tell you guys all about it. It was awesome hearing how great we're doing with the school board, by the way. It was, it was great. Yes, Jim.
Can I go back to the electrical plug for just a second?
Yes. So don't do anything about it. If I find the money, we'll pay for it.
Okay, well, my whole intent here was to bring this and have the council decide whether we do this or not. I don't think this is a bad thing. I think we can do this. This is, this is not very expensive to do. The city could afford to do this if you all decide to do it. So this wasn't, this wasn't anything more than that. It was to come and say, "Does the city spend this money?" I'm hearing no from the mayor. Is that what everybody else wants to do? Or does the city want to do this and just move forward?
I think it's an amazing piece.
Right.
I mean, that's just great. Yes.
I guess a lot of us, even as a homeowner, I don't know what things generally cost. $5,000 seems like a lot of money. We've been making do with Christmas decorations up and down Portland Avenue for a number of years and, you know, because we have not wanted to spend, I don't know how much, to get something better then. So $5,000 to basically allow us to light one tree at Christmas time, which would be the main usage of that electricity, seemed excessive to me. But I'm not a public works director. Now, I don't know if there was a way to cut a trench so an extension cord could go under that pipe down.
That's kind of what we did this last year.
Yeah. Well, no, we've been running the cord across the top of it with orange cones there for a few weeks of Christmas time. And if we could dig a trench and run it under and still do the same thing for $200 instead of $5,000, that's the way I'd do it at home, you know.
That's the way I would do it.
And can I ask, whatever direction with this electrical outlet you wait until I start construction on my community garden? Because you might be able to save some money?
Oh, perfect.
Just going to put that out there?
But I'm going to raise the money or get people to do it for free. I had never, I do not want the city to have to pay for this.
But you're looking for Christmas as a deadline, or a month or so before Christmas.
We don't get it, it worked just fine this last year, so, you know, I'm...
Well, nobody fell over it anyway.
Nobody fell over it, we were careful, digging out, yeah. So that's all I had other than to, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Merschro?
I just wanted to support the fact the council is composed of seven people, mayor and six councilors, all which have equal authority. Some have more responsibility, but we have equal authority. And that although I love having my phone go off every 15 seconds and reading an email, I believe it's important for each counselor to look at the information and see if there's something that they should be knowing about and/or can help support and/or whatever. And I believe the communication to all the councilors and mayor equally is the way it should happen. There should be no deviation there.
No, that's fine. Is that it? Well, I just wanted to say that Friday is Dr. Seuss's birthday. And if nobody has anything to do, go read at the grade school. That's what I'm going to do for an hour in the morning. I did it last year, it was the most fun I've had literally since I've become mayor, is reading to those little kids. It was a blast.
Are you a Leopards volunteer? I had to pay for this.
I go to GCCF, but actually this year I get to go to the third and fifth grade classes at Wetten. And here's a quote from Dr. Seuss. "Sometimes the questions are complicated and the answers are simple." Dr. Seuss was a great man. All right, so if we don't have anything else, the meeting, the work session's over at 9:25.